Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, the 8th District, Councilman Cohen of the 1st District, Councilman Costello of the 11th District, Councilman Glover of the 13th District, Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District, and Councilman Ramos is not on yet. We'll keep an eye out for her as the meeting proceeds. I do not see any other members of the Council at the moment. If I'm missing you, please feel free to speak up. Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move on. From the Office of the President, do I have Nikki Thompson online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nikki. Matt Segman and Aaron DeGraffenreit. And representing the Mayor's Office, do I have Natasha Mihue on the line? And Nina Themelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. So before we jump into the numbers update, I'd like to start, if we could, with a moment of silence for the victims of violence in Baltimore. Thank you. So today, we will hold two hearings. The first will be on the Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, and the second will be on the Baltimore Police Department's 5-Year Crime Reduction Strategy. And we're doing this in order to learn more about the violence in Baltimore and the particularly tough few months that we've had of late. We're seeing incredibly worrying increases in homicides and non-fatal shootings. Just this last week, a 15-year-old high schooler was shot to death in an alley, and a 17-year-old girl walked into a hospital with a wound on her leg. In January, my district, a 72-year-old woman was shot, and thankfully, she survived. Just earlier today, I had an opportunity to talk to a woman in my district who was worried about the continued crime and violence and what that means for her neighbors in our city. And I can tell you, probably pretty confidently, a number of my colleagues have similar stories. We're also seeing a significant rise in robberies and thefts of vehicles. And today, we have a chance to talk about the crime statistics of the Baltimore Police Department's efforts in response. We will also discuss the Baltimore Police Department's 5-Year Crime Strategy as announced in 2019, and we'll give the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement the opportunity to talk about progress on the Group Violence Reduction Strategy implementation as we near the end of our first quarter. Lastly, it's important that we speak to the coordination of public safety agencies, an issue that I've been bringing up a lot lately, because we know that when we don't have everyone working well together, things fall through the cracks. And the public safety as a whole suffers. So I know we have a long agenda ahead of us today, and I'll wrap it up there, but I look forward to hearing from all the presentations, and thank you all, guys, for attending. So first, we have Bill LO-21-006, Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, for the purpose of the Committee holding a hearing quarterly to review crime statistics for the Baltimore Police Department and to monitor the progress of the Biennial Violence Prevention Plan. This bill was introduced on March 8, 2021. It was sponsored by myself. And I will turn it over to... Actually, one second. Nina, I understand the Health Commissioner wants to say a few words. Do you have a sense of how much time the Health Commissioner needs, and is it okay if we put that at the back end with the 5-year plan? Nina?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, my dog was barking, so I was trying to get her to stop before I unmuted. I believe as close to the beginning of the hearing as possible would be appreciated. I don't believe she needs much time.
Let's do it now, then, just so we can address it quickly. Commissioner, are you on?
Mr. Chair, this is Director Jackson. I believe that the Commissioner, just coming back from vacation, is headed into another meeting from 1:00 to 1:30, and that a representative from her team will speak at the beginning of Monty's engagement, if that is all right.
Okay. Then we'll do that, and we'll move forward with BPD's presentation. So BPD, yours.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to the members of the Committee. Thank you for allowing us to be before you today to talk about what we have done, to talk about what we are doing, and what we will do regarding public safety in the city of Baltimore and the transformation of the Baltimore City Police Department, where we work, where we are, and where we're going. So I lead by a concept, a leadership concept called accountability-driven leadership. But accountability without transparency is not accountability at all. So we look forward to presenting to you and being available to answer any questions that you or the other members of the Committee might have, so that in full transparency, we can demonstrate to you that we are being accountable to the residents of Baltimore as well as to ourselves. Thank you, and at this time, I'll pass it off to my Deputy Commissioner, Trere Briscoe, who will go through the pre-see kitchen.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Commissioner Harrison. Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, and the entire Council that is present. Presenting with me today will also be Colonel Worley, Colonel Worley and Colonel Jones, as well as Lieutenant Colonel Herzog. If there's anything that I may miss in my presentation, they will be joining me to respond. We're going to walk through our presentation of accountability and planning and our proactive and collaborative efforts to reduce crime. CompStat 360 with equity. Our CompStat meetings are a culmination of our regular meeting structure, the roll-up into our police debt. It is an opportunity for our district intelligence unit and our administrative meetings and our noon crime calls to all roll up into one meeting that pushes to our CompStat. As the slides are going before you, Chairman, I will allow you to read through them, and I'll just offer some understanding in the background while you read through the slides. If there's anything you'd like me to go deeper in, please don't hesitate to stop me, and I can go deeper into the presentation. The four guiding principles of our weekly meetings lie before you, and thank you for the next slide. Our CompStat 360 with equity includes all districts' CID sections, as well as the rest of the entire organization. It is a 360 evaluation of how our agency is performing that also includes asset management, resources, and budgets. As well as speaking to the crime plans, each district and section is required to submit their plans weekly. That is a weekly subset to their quarterly plans. We do our plans based on the seasons that include any trends and patterns, and we do them in a way that include community and city partners, as in, we ensure through our CompStat presentation that our agency, our districts, are speaking to how they're dealing with issues that include other community members and city partners. I'll take the next slide. So we're going to start with our place-based strategy, our proactive and collaborative place-based strategy. We continue to focus our efforts on our microzones. We have 84 microzones, where the level of crime is the highest in the city. That number is reduced from our initial number of one over 100 microzones through evaluation of crime statistics and data. We're continuously, year over year, evaluating our performance in these areas and discerning whether or not they need to remain an area of focus. Our command must prioritize proactive engagements in these areas that include foot patrol, business checks, traffic stops, and warrant turners. Our overall crime plan has set a goal that our officers commit 20 minutes out of every hour to these areas. Our proactive engagement is regularly reviewed during our CompStat 360 meetings using our dashboards in an effort to display any gains or losses in terms of our performance throughout our evaluation CompStat process. And I'll take the next slide. Our problem-oriented policing. In addition to our regular proactive engagement, we address ongoing chronic issues through problem-oriented policing approaches. For example, districts incorporate crime prevention through environmental design using our 311 app. Year-to-date, we have entered over 2,300 service requests. All of this information is also shared during our CompStat presentation and evaluation. It also rolls up to our citywide meeting in CleanStat. I'll take the next slide. Another example of our problem-oriented policing is in the neighborhood policing plans. This is a deeply collaborative effort with city and community partners, and the image on the screen shows how we're looking at vacant buildings and crime data in a coordinated fashion to make coordinated strategic decisions to have better impacts for our community. Next slide. Our people-based strategies, again, our proactive and collaborative strategies. Our group violence reduction strategy. We are committed to building teams that support the strategy across our department. This includes training and professional development. Orientation for the Group Violence Reduction Unit is happening this week. Since September of 2020, we've been running and refining shooting reviews to ensure that we have the latest intelligence and data needed to be able to effectively execute our GVRI strategy. Overall partnerships are key to this strategy. And I know that our Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement will discuss more as this hearing goes forward. Next slide. We've expanded our victim services unit. The victim services unit started in 2016 in our agency, and they were largely focused on homicides, though we do have advocates in our Family Crimes Unit and in our SIS Unit, Special Investigation Section. In 2016, as they started, they have since enhanced and have been able to support more of community and more crime types. Next slide. The next people-based strategy is our Crime Gun Intelligence Center, commonly referred to as our CGIC, is an important resource that helps us draw connections between incidents using ballistic evidence. It's used for our detectives for their individual cases, and it is also used to make connections of large-scale patterns between geographies and individuals. Our CGIC includes an analytical and outreach component, and we partner with our ATF federal partner. Next slide. There have been several warrant initiatives. We have already executed one warrant initiative this year with our partner. It was our Operation Washout, as you see before you the numbers on the slide. But there's monthly a warrant initiative that we do internally and with other stakeholders. We have our WATF Top 5 Priority Warrants, our US Marshals Initiative, our Harm Index Warrants, which are the execution of misdemeanor warrants, and we do an initiative with our Sheriff's Office. Next slide. Before you, Councilman, Chairman, rather, is our clearance rates. As you see, we have been challenging our team members and ourselves to press on the investigations, to do a great deal of outreach. Though in some categories, we are just below the national average, and many of the priority categories, we are just at the national average. And in one category, particularly in our robberies, we are slightly above the national average. Though we have parsed out non-fatal shootings, we know that non-fatal shootings is a subset of our aggravated assault. But for homicides, as you see, we're at 54.4%, just slightly down, just 3% down from the national average, I'm sorry, 0.3% down from the national average. Our non-fatal shootings are at 25.6%, just slightly down from the national average, and our robbery arrests are at 28... I'm sorry, robbery clearance is at 28.7%, just above, and our burglaries at 9%, just slightly below the national average. And this is comparative to cities of comparable size. Next slide, please. Year-to-date, we have been able to make 32 homicide arrests of suspect. 32 homicide arrests year-to-date, 26 homicide arrests have been from, have been individuals of previous record. 16 of them have been repeat violent offenders, and six have been with no previous records. For our non-fatal shooting arrests, we've affected 32 arrests this year. Of those 32 arrests, 21 individuals that were arrested had a previous record. 11 were repeat violent offenders, and 11 suspects had no prior record. Our gun-related arrests. Our gun-related arrests are down 1% this year. We are down... We have 346, I'm sorry, 345 gun-related arrests this year. 305 of them are in patrol, and 40 of them are in non-patrol units. Though the non-patrol unit arrests are slightly up, what is up this year is our crime gun seizures. So this year, we have made 573 crime gun seizures against 479 from last year, which is a 20% increase. And for this next slide, I'll turn it over to Director Wirthsberger.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Committee, for the record, my name is Michelle Wirthsberger, and I'm Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. As we talk about our proactive and collaborative efforts to reduce crime, we thought it was very important to talk about what we did in the state or have been doing, and will continue to do for the next week and a half in terms of the state legislative session, is there's a couple of bills that we have been pushing very hard on, bills that we think will help in our crime fight, help us address issues that we're seeing in the city, and also help us to collaborate further with our partners. The first and biggest issue that we have been fighting for several years now is ghost guns. I am absolutely thrilled to announce that the Legislature passed this bill and sent it to the Governor yesterday. Chairman, you're familiar with this bill. You went down to Indianapolis with us and testified in support, and of course, we're appreciative of your efforts there. We also supported a bill that would create stronger penalties for those who engage in illegal straw purchases of guns. That's an issue that we have talked about time and time again here. Another bill is Notification of Pre-Trial Release of Defendants. I know this sounds crazy, but when someone is released from prison prior to trial, we aren't notified. And so this person may get back on the street, may go and try to enact some sort of retribution, and we are not prepared, the community is not prepared, and certainly, any victims or witnesses are not prepared when that individual enters the community again. So we've been fighting for that. Warrant Apprehension Grants. This is an idea or a program that will help law enforcement agencies get additional resources to to go after folks who have warrants. One thing that we've talked about, has been in the news a bit, is street racing and exhibition driving. This is an issue that the entire state has been seeing. Particularly the exhibition driving, that is essentially when you see large groups of cars. Usually, they are car clubs, go to an area, they swarm it, and then they drive in circles. And so we have been supporting a bill that would create additional penalties and allow us to to show certain types of vehicles. Folks who are participating under certain circumstances would get points on their license. And then the very last thing, although there's other things, but not everything is relevant to this particular conversation, is the inter-jurisdictional policing grants. We always talk about the ways that we are coordinating with law enforcement partners at the federal, the state, and the local levels. This is something that will allow us to maybe continue and enhance those efforts as we go forward and try to to collaborate to solve, stop crimes. And so with that, I will go back on mute and turn it back over to DC Briscoe.
Thank you so much. As we walk through our crime statistics, the crime statistics are before you, Chairman and Council. One of the things that I can tell you is that we've been grappling with our spikes and trends this year, and we have seen also some multi-victim incidents that have added to some of the challenges that we've experienced this year.
Deputy, can I come in, and I'd like to speak and speak to that just for a moment. Mr. Chairman and other members of the Committee, the $10 million question everyone asks us, and I'm certainly ask you, is what's attributing to these spikes, especially this most recent trend coming into the new year with homicides and shootings? While we sometimes know motive, and many times don't know motive, it's very hard to anticipate or to understand what the rationale is in the mind of the offender. What we can present to you is what we do know. What we know is that in 2021, what we know is that it is not necessarily more offenders pulling the trigger, shooting more people, but rather, we have more incidents where the offender shot multiple people. And I'll walk through that just for a few seconds and turn it back over to Deputy Commissioner Briscoe. In 2021, there were five incidents with three, this time, the same time last year, from January 1st to the same time, there were five incidents with three victims. There were 13 incidents with two victims. For a total of 41 victims, accounting for 21% of all total victims. Comparably, this year in 2022, we have four incidents with four victims, three incidents with three victims, and 21 incidents with two victims. For a total of 67 victims, that's accounted for 27% of all victims from the beginning of the year to this time compared to the same time last year. So once again, it is not necessarily more offender committing more shooting incidents, thereby having more victims. It could very well be, what we're seeing is, it's a smaller number of individuals who have shot more victims in more incidents where multiple victims were shot. We have incidents by this same time with four of them with four victims. We didn't have four incidents with four victims this same time last year. And we more than doubled, almost more than tripled, the number of incidents with two victims, exponentially increased. So that is attributing to the spike this year with more victims. It's not more perpetrators shooting more individual victims, but rather more incidents with multiple victims being hit. Some non-fatal, others have been fatal. I'll turn it back over to the Deputy Commissioner. There are similar, when she gets to the robbery incidents, there are similar explanations for robberies as well, which she'll outline.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Harrison. And to your point, we've seen that happen with our homicides and our non-fatal shootings this year, and we've also seen the continued... We've seen a spike, rather, and especially in our robberies, and I know that we often parse out the subset of robbery and talk about carjackings. And we see that with our carjackings. We've seen a lot of, quite a few of our carjacking spikes have involved young people. To give you an example of what I'm speaking of, we looked at 16 of the individuals, I'm sorry, 23 of the individuals that we, our last arrest for the crime of carjacking. Of those 23 individuals, 16 of them were previously arrested within the last year. So that means that we're having, there's a gap or an added challenge with some of our young people and those that are offending, getting back out and re-offending, as an example of one of the trends that we're seeing where robbery is concerned. We have also been grappling with at least seven different robbery patterns, whether they were commercial-related, carjacking-related, street robbery-related. There have been seven different identified patterns that we have been navigating through and responding to and deploying to thus far this year.
If I can go back and just touch on the shootings for one second. We also see, we also see an increase in the level of brazenness, which speaks to the criminal intent of the offender. I just came from a scene in East Baltimore on Broadway Street, where three individuals were shot. There was a police officer, an often the police officer working overtime for Johns Hopkins, sitting in a guard booth right there at the intersection within 30 feet of where it occurred. And when it occurred, it's a known view where he observed that he had to run to the aid of the victims. So we're seeing an increase in this level of brazenness, which speaks to what I always say, and what we always say, the consequences. Are there belief that there are none? Or there lack of any fear of any consequences, whether real or perceived? And that is just extremely shocking. Now, this is very noteworthy. We noticed that there's an increase in the number of multiple victims being shot in single incidents. That is no less concerning. We are still concerned about it equally, if not more, because it speaks to the brazenness of the offender that just shoots indiscriminately in the crowds, hitting multiple people, many of whom are innocent and are not the intended target. So we're very concerned about it, and we're working hard to address it. But I thought it was important to bring that part up. I'll turn it back over to you, Devin.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that addition. To your point, we were there today, and that's one of the things that I can tell you, as we were talking to community members, that was also most concerning for them, is that the officer is literally right there. And still, this is something we're challenged with. Thank you for that. Next slide, please. And before you now are the district homicide comparisons, year over year, district by district. To this point, Northwest District is the most challenged with homicides in terms of number of incidents, and second and third to the Northwest have been the Southwest and the Southern Districts. What I can tell you, what we're seeing here, are some links, links through NIBIN and links through intelligence. And those cases that are linked through NIBIN and linked through intelligence are worked collectively and collaboratively with our detectives. And so that's where we are with our homicides, and I'll pause and let you review those slides. Next slide. For our non-fatal shootings, as you can see here in our non-fatal shooting slide, the Southern District, they are challenged with, it was third for homicides and leading for non-fatal shootings in the Southern District. Is the high, second to them is the Central District, and third is the Eastern District. Again, what we've seen in terms of any trends or patterns has been the linkage of cases, whether it be from the east part of town to the west or the north to the south, we've seen linkages through our NIBIN leads, which, as you know, is the recovery of the weapons and the shell casings, and linkages through our intelligence, and some of those individuals in terms of groups that we know have been moving throughout the city. Thank you. And here is our domestic and our youth violence slide. At the top portion of that slide, there you see our domestic numbers, totals, year-to-date, in the hierarchical crime structure. Though our domestic violence crimes over all year-to-date, the reporting of them are down 22%. And I always anchor that statement by saying the reporting is down because we do recognize and acknowledge that the domestic violence is still a challenge for our community. And we're working with our partners to address domestic violence through outreach and engagement and prevention and intervention.
Deputy Commissioner, just to clarify, these numbers are victim-based?
Yes, they are.
So the victims are youth and the victims are domestic violence victims?
No, no. So the, so the, the top portion is the domestic violence year-over-year. The violence at the bottom is the number of individuals that are youth that have been victimized.
Got it. Thank you.
Not domestic and victim at the bottom. It's just on one slide.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So the top portion of, just to your point, is our domestic victim slide for those hierarchy crimes. You see our reportable crimes, and I, I paused because I know we're changing our language there to NIBERS. But, and again, those are our youth violence slide at the bottom portion of your screen. What I can tell you is that we've seen a spike in our youth victims to 16 to 24. The trend is still, the victims that are 25 to 35 are still our largest portion of our victims in terms of our trend, though we have seen a, a small spike in our youth victimology. Next, thank you so much. Post with our highest number of non-fatal shootings and homicides. And I know we offer this information, but I also, again, anchor it by saying that who has been struggling thus far this year in terms of homicides and non-fatal shootings together has been the Northwest, the Southwest, and the Southern. That is not to diminish anything that is happening in any parts of our city. I'm just trying to anchor that, this slide with some perspective.
Thank you. I think we're gonna pause here. And before we actually go into questions, I believe our Health Commissioner is on, and we're gonna give her an opportunity to give an update, and then we'll open up the Florida questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giraza.
Can you guys see me and hear me okay, hopefully?
As we can.
Good afternoon, Chair, and to other members of the committee. Thank you all so much for this opportunity to provide some public health background information on the impact and implications of the global pandemic on violence. So unfortunately, as we all know, 2022 marks the beginning of the third year of this global pandemic. And while as a country, I think we've done a very good job of tracking many of the COVID-19 metrics as it relates to cases and death rates, we still have much more work to do when we examine, analyze, and address the short and long-term impacts of COVID-19 on social isolation and violence. We know that violence is not randomly distributed, and the same factors that influence and shape our health, the conditions where we live, work, worship, grow, and play, also known as the social determinants of health, are very strongly linked to violence. We know that social isolation, particularly what many have experienced during the pandemic, may expose or worsen individual vulnerabilities due to a lack of established social supports. Additionally, according to the World Health Organization, in the first year of the COVID-19 global pandemic, the global prevalence of anxiety and depression increased by 25%. Quarantine conditions alone were associated with alcohol abuse, depression, and post-traumatic stress symptoms. Add this on top of an already resource-strained behavioral health system and the existing challenges and disparities around access to behavioral health, and we really have the worsening of acute and chronic behavioral health crises here in our country. So as we saw this underlying behavioral challenge, we also saw an increase in gun purchases nationally. In March of 2020, as the coronavirus pandemic began to spread rapidly throughout the United States, Americans bought nearly 2 million guns. And these are guns, this is the recorded buying of guns. This is the second-highest monthly total in decades since previous records, which had been kept. Previous studies have also shown that firearm availability is a risk factor for suicide. In a study that looked at handgun ownership and suicide in California, a new handgun ownership was strongly associated with suicide immediately following California's 10-day waiting period between the purchase and acquisition of the firearm. And although the risk of suicide was higher among men compared to women, new handgun ownership was associated with disproportionately greater increase of death by suicide among women. In May of 2020, during the pandemic, ED visits for suspected suicide attempts also began to increase among adolescents aged 12 to 17, especially girls. And during February 2021 through March 20th of 2021, suspected suicide ED attempt visits were about 50% higher among girls 12 to 17 compared to the prior reported period in 2019. And among boys 12 to 17, suspected suicides had increased by about 3.7%. Unfortunately, what we also saw is that reports of domestic violence also increased during the pandemic. In a study published by the American Journal of Emergency Medicine, some American cities saw an increase of domestic violence calls by 10 to 27% following the stay-at-home orders. And we know that in interviews done by advocates of victims of domestic violence, and particularly violence among children as well as CPS workers, some themes were identified. COVID-19 compounded the challenges of intimate partner violence specifically in having those survivors meet their basic needs. COVID-19 was also being used to control intimate partner violence survivors. And COVID-19 mitigation strategies really needed to be balanced with a trauma-informed practice. So all of these challenges have been compounded by the disproportionate burden of COVID-19, especially on the BIPOC community. And there really is no single solution. We must continue to utilize a public health approach to address all of the underlying root causes, the social determinants of violence, if we want to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that insight, and I think we're gonna open up for questions, and I, my, my first question, I think, probably goes to you in light of those insights. What, what we saw and what I understand what we've seen, and BPD can correct me on this, but we, we actually saw that we were trending downward in crime up until maybe November. We were actually doing quite well. And then sometime in November, things started getting worse. And we, you know, attributed it to a spike. It continued into December, January, February, now March. We're seeing this trend play out. I, I don't have a doubt that some of the behavioral health components do play a part in it. My question is what changed from then to now? And as a result, how should we be looking at this from an enforcement perspective? Because there is a role there. From other perspectives in providing support for people, but if we know that this is a part of the problem, then what should be our response?
So maybe I'll, I'll start with some initial thoughts, but certainly defer to BPD around the enforcement piece. I, I will say, I think we kept a lot of our, at least in the city, a lot of our mitigation, public health mitigation measures and restrictions in place for a bit longer. Now, whether that kept people at home a little longer, I think it's certainly possible. So I mean, I think that that certainly could have, could have been part of it. I think if you look at when some of the financial support maybe shifted, it, it probably was around that time as well. So again, when we think about the social determinants of health, access to resources, access to financial support, I think, you know, possibly as that went away, certainly there, there could have been a linkage there as well. But I think it also just speaks to the need for us to address violence on, you know, a broader level, right? So obviously, there is the enforcement piece, which, which BPD will talk about. And I know, you know, Monzi is gonna kind of talk a lot about what we're doing across agencies, but it, but it, I think it isn't just one single agency, it isn't just one single approach. It's really how are we providing supports across all city agencies? How are we ensuring appropriate access to, you know, job availability? How are we ensuring that, that folks have transportation to get to jobs? You know, I think it's, it's really a combination of all those things.
Thank you. BPBD, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I'd like to start off, and then other members of my team can certainly come in. I, I think Dr. Giraza was, was spot-on when she talked, and I would have said the same thing. The reopening of the city was somewhere around that time, although the restrictions were in place. We saw more people coming out, which created more vulnerability for victims. And most of these are crimes of, while we talk about the violent crime, like shootings and homicides, we certainly saw the increase in crimes of opportunity, like burglaries and robberies, specifically carjacks and street robberies, commercial robberies. So as more businesses opened up, it created more vulnerability for an opportunity for victims to become victimized and for offenders to prey on those victims. That's number one. I think that was sort of the height of the Omicron variant. I myself became infected with COVID, right days after Christmas. So the, we were at our highest point, somewhere almost at 400 absentees a day with COVID, starting in maybe October going through February, where we began to see the decreases in absentees and quarantines because of COVID or exposure. And on top of that, I think that was the height of our logistical challenges where we were seeing days and weeks and months where a third or more of our vehicles were down for repairs, type of the absence. And so when you put all that together, the vulnerability of the victims, the, the will of the offenders, offenders apparently looked like never got sick. They stayed out and continued to prey on victims, but as the city opened up and more people were out traveling, opening up more businesses, indoor dining and indoor shopping were all coming back online. And more of us were being absent from work because of infection and quarantine and the logistical ability to be in as many places as we can be and all played a factor. So there's no one thing, but I think those are a few that give some context to it that could certainly make it visible to the offender that it was probably easier for them to offend. That makes sense.
Yeah, it, it's interesting. In my, in my opening statement, I had an opportunity to talk to a constituent actually earlier today, and I was really, really worried about crime. Of course, we all are. Interestingly, though, her, her biggest concern that she brought up with me was communication about why and what and the types and the locations of crime. And for her, what she explained to me was that it just made her feel uneasy that the crime is everywhere and it could happen at any time to anybody for any reason, day or night. I think that, that fear, it weighs on a lot of people. And I think as we see these crime numbers go up, it's important for us to be able to explain what's going on, or as best we understand where it's happening, why it's happening. I think this begins to go down that path in understanding some of it. I do also believe there are probably additional considerations, but I, I do appreciate Dr. Giraza, the, the, the public health perspective on understanding behavioral changes. And also, Commissioner Harrison, your understanding of things opening up. I think those two conflating issues can create in some ways a perfect storm. That, that said, the million-dollar question is what do we do about it?
Absolutely. There's always, you know, we do this every single day. There's always an assessment of what's working and what's not working. What our deployment looks like today and what happened as a result of today's deployment? And how do we assess, overcome it and readjust? And one, try to prevent more crime or prevent the crime from reoccurring. And then apprehending those who are committing those crimes, building good cases, making sure that the cases we build are quality cases that make it into and stay in the criminal justice system so people can be held accountable. But also making sure that we're not working in silos, that we are using partnerships, as you talked about earlier, and that all of our efforts are synchronized, whether they're state partners, whether they're federal partners, whether they're civilian, faith-based, academic, business, nonprofit, all of us are working together for the common goal of deter and crime and apprehending those who committed so that we can hold them accountable, identifying who the bad actors are, the at-risk individuals, and working to also give them a pathway away so that we can not only prevent them from committing crime and catch them when they do, but we can change their minds about even being in that lifestyle. You know, that's why it's so important that we work in the short term to stop them, but we work in the long term to change them. That's what the group violence reduction strategy is all about, that you'll hear more about where we are. And, but there's daily assessments and daily adjustments, not just with personnel, but with deployment strategy, with equipment that we're using, techniques that we're using, cases that we're building, and then accountability to make sure that the strategy, the cases are all good and solid and there are no, there are no gaps or holes that will cause us to lose those. And then the offender is re-offending because of something we did or failed to do.
Appreciate that. I, I want to jump into my next question, and it kind of ties to the sort of domino effect of sorts of crime, and, and I'll get into that. So a criminal contagion is the process whereby the criminal, a criminal contagion is a process whereby the criminality of one person elicits a criminal reaction in another. In understanding this theory and how it relates to retaliatory violence in the city, can you talk to us about how the department uses this concept to connect people within networks to predict potential trigger pullers and victims of retaliatory violence?
Absolutely. Look, I have several members of our team who are ready to jump in and help with that right now. I think what you're talking about, what we call in criminalology is general deterrence. The deterrent, the, the specific deterrent deters the offender because the offender becomes incapacitated to arrest. But the general deterrent is when the spectators or people who are looking to see what happens to that person make a decision of whether or not they are going to join in in criminal activity, or they're gonna use what happened to that offender to deter them from doing. We're working on all those angles to identify who those would-be potential offenders are because they're at risk and how we go after the ones who have already committed crimes and how we try to intervene and have interventions and prevention for those who have not yet committed or who are still reachable.
And to that point, Commissioner Harrison, you just described our group violence reduction strategy where it concerns our shooting reviews. So one of the things that we're doing is we're looking at how groups are formed and who's in the groups. Some, of course, will need the hand of the criminal justice system, and others will need other hands. And that's why we're working so closely with our partners, ROKA and YAP, as we're able to discern those groups that we're pointing the right need and the right, the appropriate hand to best service that group. So that is in part what you're hearing, and I, and I'm not trying to pull on the presentation that you'll get when you hear the readout as to where we are in terms of progress from Monzi, but that's essentially what we're talking about, is that group dynamic and how it lives, moves, breeds in our city, and that we have the appropriate response for those members of the group.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up the Florida questions from folks on the committee. Any hands up? I see Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen, and Porter, did you have your hand up as well?
I did, sir, yes.
Okay, so in that order. Councilman Burnett, yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues and staff at Baltimore Police for joining us again for this quarterly update. The first question I had, so I noticed that the, and it's something I've, I've been asking at every single one of these. I've noticed that the rape clearance rate data has been removed from the presentation. Can I ask why that was taken out?
I, I don't think that there was an intent into the why. I don't have a problem. I know my team is, is in front of their terminals. I just think it was for the sake of succinct reporting, but we can ensure that you, we add that back in and then you come upcoming presentation. But my team is in front of their terminals and we don't have a problem speaking to it. I can tell you, as I said in previous, Councilman Burnett, good afternoon, so I can tell you, as I've said in previous hearings, that we changed our methodology as an agency. What we knew is that some of the cases, especially for rape, that were being exceptionally cleared, that is not a good best practice. And as an organization, we did not, we are not clearing cases simply because there's not going to be a push toward prosecution, especially where rape is concerned, though that is an eligible category by which you can technically exceptionally clear. What we do not want to do is send a message to any victim that we don't, that we're not going to pursue a case. So there has been a change in the clearance rate, and some of that changes as a direct result of our policy change and our process change. and our process change. That administratively, a case may be closed because we can't move forward through prosecution. Um, but we, but we will still do our best to follow up with a victim and continue to, if any new leads or information comes in. Um, because that, and that category of rape um often involves cases where the victim and the suspect are known to each other. Uh, we're not talking about stranger cases. We're talking about where um two persons are known to one another and it is a word against a word. Um, and then we're not able to, to prosecute that case. Um, but if any one of my members has that clearance rate at their fingertips, please don't hesitate to jump in.
I have it. This is Colonel Orley. The uh, the rape clearance rate is sixteen percent year to date. And it's broken down in two different categories. One is sex offense unit and then the second one is the child abuse unit. But combined, it's sixteen percent.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think it would be helpful for our purposes. If, if we could see it broken out and for future presentations, but I guess in the interim, if that could be provided to the committee. Um, the other thing that I think may be helpful for us is exactly what you noted. Um, if we could get the data on stranger, stranger suspect or if the person was known, I think that would be uh useful for, for, for myself and the committee. Um, on, on that end. Uh, and if we could also get um how many, uh, I guess a breakdown of cases that are um not prosecuted, I guess the total number of cases broken down by type and whether they were prosecuted or not, I think would be helpful. And uh just broader uh stats on sexual offenses, I think would be helpful. I mean, I, I know that most of our focus in these hearings and uh across the city is on gun violence in particular, but this is also another form of violence that I think should not be overlooked. And I'm not saying that you are, I just think for the purposes of these hearings that we should continue to um a- assess that. If that's cool. And I don't know if you have any follow-up on any of those requests.
Uh, so if, if we can, I know that there's something going to the chat. We'll work with you to get specifically what you want that we can answer. But to your point, and you are correct, we're, we're not overlooking them. And, and I know in this hearing is often a, a hyper focused on, and, and, and that is a violent crime, well, but it's often focused on homicides and shootings. But just for context, um, Councilmember Burnett, I want, I want to tell you that year to date, we have had um fifty-five um rape cases and thirty-eight are known to one another. Um, so that information is in front of me. It's just not on the slide deck. So happy to work with your team to see exactly how you're, you're asking for that information so that we can deliver on it.
Okay, we'll shoot you an email um as well. So it's all, it's all pretty clear. Uh, the other question I had, uh, just a little bit more broadly, um, can you explain to us the clearance rate uh process when a new year starts? Um, so this year's clearance rate is reflective from uh things that occurred from January on. Uh, could you explain how unresolved cases from year, from previous years factor into your solving rate or provide us the committee with figures specifically for the years of unsolved homicides and crimes, essentially like what's the carryover from year to year? Um, a- as, as a way for us to sort of see, you know, someone, if an incident occurred in November. But you, you know, solved the crime in February. I think that may be helpful for us as well. Um, because oftentimes, I know I, I get questions from constituents about, and I know I can reach out to individual command staff, but it may be helpful for us to know, you know, if something occurred last summer. Um, how are we doing as far as continuing to, to follow through on those investigations and where we are relative to the clearance rate in, in, you know, year to date, if that makes sense?
It does. I'll, I'll answer the process question first and then I'll, we'll kind of go from there. So what I want to do is anchor this. This isn't a BPD only. Um, this isn't the only way we do it. This is a, we, we're responding to um the FBI and UCR, Uniform Crime Reporting. Um, I know as a, as a nation, we're moving to NIBERS, uh, which will give us um a more specific delve into uh each crime incident. So for the sake of this conversation, I'm going to speak to what is in UCR. It is a standard in terms of how you count for your crime. So whatever year the crime occurs in, meaning that we could have an individual that is victimized in twenty twenty-one and he or she um may not fall, I mean, may pass away in twenty twenty-two. That incident will take, the homicide will, will, will take the number in twenty twenty-two, not when the original per se aggravated assault occurred. Similarly, so are clearances. The incident may happen in a prior year. You may not close it until this year. That is the year in which you take your clearance. Same so if we are using the tool of exceptional clearance. It may be for a prior year incident. But if you're exceptionally clearing it because you have met by criteria and standard, been able to answer the four required questions with supplemental documents, then that clearance exceptionally is also counted in that year. So it does not mean, so if you have an investigation that occurred in a prior year, we don't stop investigating it. A case may go cold, we may not get new leads. That's why you'll often see us push out information and intelligence saying, remember this case, we're looking for more leads, we're looking for more intelligence, we're still looking at um evidence. Especially if we have DNA or any type of ballistic evidence. So we don't stop investigating it. Um, there, there is a category of administrative closure and that's what I alluded to when I said that we're not going to exceptionally clear it. But because there's not going to be a prosecution, um, as you know, we don't control that piece of it. But we have done everything that we can to investigate that case and administratively the case is closed. Because there's no evidence that allow us to prosecute it because the, the suspect and victim are known to each other. So there are a variety of categories, but glad to share with you what the UCR report requires by the FBI standards. Um, so that you're clear whenever you're getting an inquiry through um the constituency. Um, but that is all printed and available documents from um the FBI's UCR website, but we are glad to provide that to your office. Um, to the, all of the council for the sake of our constituents, because we want them to fully understand our communities and fully understand how we categorize a crime, how we clear crime and how, and whether that is clearance through arrest or clearance exceptionally. Um, our communities, as well as you, you should know that. I'm so glad to help facilitate some, um, some learning behind that.
And consequently, that's, that's the, that's the standard for all law enforcement leaders across America.
And if I could just add one, one additional point, um, so that you all are aware when we're making arrests in these, you know, these cases in your district, we will, just like we send you the text message that the incident occurred, we will also send you uh on the thread when an arrest has occurred. And oftentimes we will include the original post to refresh your memory um about when it happened and what the circumstances of that incident were. If any of the council members are not receiving those for some reason, please do let uh me or Shannon know so we can make sure we have updated your, your cell phone number. Thank you.
And, and I know your question, Councilmember Burnett, largely stemmed around the category of, of rape. Um, just know that when we make arrests, we'll normally talk about them, but we, but we are very careful with how we handle our surviving victims of sexual assault. Um, so that may not get as much wide press, if you will, um, but happy to share um because we have made some arrests um this year where rape is concerned.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful and maybe a, in, in this reporting, like a, a number of like just open cases. I think it would be helpful for us to get an idea of the workload that your homicide detectives are under at any given time that we're doing this over, these sort of oversight hearings. Um, I, I think that would be useful to know. Obviously, we know how many incidents have occurred, but I think if there's, you know, X number of open, open cases broadly uh for homicide or, or other uh types of violent crime, I think that may be useful for us. Um, that's all I have for this, this, this round, Mr. Mr. Chair. And thank you for those good responses.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Cohen, yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, both Commissioners. Uh, one, first one is for Commissioner Drazza and the Health Department. Um, one of the dynamics that I think is at play is a looming and uh pending mental health crisis, not just facing Baltimore, but in cities all over the country right now where we're seeing rise in violence and to your earlier statistics, rise in suicide, rise in all the other indicators. We also know from past pandemics that mental health is a lagging indicator, that the bulk of the hit, if you will, comes toward the back end of the pandemic, but that it actually lasts longer and can have more of an impact than the physical health. Um, wondering from your perspective, one, is that what you are seeing as well in terms of pretty profound mental health crisis facing folks? And then two, um, how do we increase access to mental health services? Do also just want to say truly appreciate your ongoing partnership with the Healing City Act and the work we've been doing together. Thank you.
Councilman, I'm not sure if she is still on. She, she did have to hop off at two. I'm not sure if another representative from the Health Department. Oh, actually, I see Kelly.
Hey, everybody. Yes, she did have to hop off and um I actually, I'm gonna have to get back to you. Um, which was on that one.
All right, no worries. Um, so I will go straight to BPD then. Um, so, you know, one of the again, really concerning trends is increase in carjackings. Um, you know, it's a crime that uh seems to feel very random. You, you don't know when it's gonna happen. It's extremely traumatizing to victims. Um, what I've been told, part of why we're seeing an increase again in Baltimore and DC, all over the place, is because most cars now, as opposed to having a key that you had to plug in and, you know, previously people might steal the car. Now, if you steal a car with a key fob, if you don't have the fob, the thing, you're not going anywhere. Um, I'm curious, from the department's perspective, is there a specific strategy to deal with carjackings, knowing that it is a seemingly random and very difficult crime to try to stop? But just last night, we had a really horrific carjacking in my district. I know that many of my constituents have expressed ongoing concerns about it. So I'm wondering if we have a strategy specifically geared toward carjacking?
I'll start off. Thank you, Councilman. Good to see you. I'll start off and I'll let the rest of the team come in. You are right. And as I, as I talk to uh leaders across the country, that is the phenomenon now that the, the newer model cars, maybe within the last ten years, all have electronic key fob where the car will not run without it. So although there are still auto thefts in the traditional sense where offenders are stealing the car, their older model cars or people are leaving keys inside the car and they're taking the car because the key fob was left in the car, which is not to blame the victim, but there are simple things we can do to remedy that. Simply let's not leave the keys in the car. Uh, so a lot of them are happening that way. But the larger amount are people taking the car because the the victim is in possession of the key fob. It's happening largely at places where the victim is at the car door. Either inside the car, getting out or outside the car, getting in or at the trunk, loading or unloading the trunk. The majority of the ones we see fit that MO. Yes, and so we have strategy to, to try to deter it as much as we can, but it does require being in, in more places than we can physically be in. But uh, but we have made some arrests, we have found some patterns, we have found some individuals who are within those patterns. And I'll let, I'll let the deputy come in and take it a little bit first.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Harrison. And without getting into some of the nuts and bolts that we often talk about um in smaller settings, I can tell you that we do, we do have a strategy for, we use um tools, data. Um, we use uh LPRs, um, and we do use our helicopter um to aid us in responding to carjackings. We also push out a bunch of preventative information um to our communities um to ju- try to curb some of the potential uh opportunity to become a victim as in sitting in your car for prolonged periods of time and not exiting. So there's a, there's two ways that we're approaching it. Um, by having a response when an incident occurs and by having a preventative response in our community meetings just by sharing some um target hardening tips to try to, as best we can mitigate that. Um, and share them broadly with community to understand that there are some things that we can do to look out for each other and our neighbor um as well as arm ourselves. Um, but to the, to your quick an- answer, we do have um a strategy. And while we've been sitting here on this call, I can tell you that our um regional auto theft task force just made arrests of two individuals who's born in oh five and oh six um for a carjacking arrest. Um, uh, literally while we've been sitting on this call. So that's work that continues around the twenty-four hour clock for our team. Um, there is a, um, a particular way we have our units respond once that call for service comes in that we are on um uh the appropriate arteries um uh in, in areas of egress so that we can um a- as best we can try to capture or uh locate as soon as possible. And we're sharing that information um with our partners and internally when it occurs that we are all looking for the appropriate vehicles. Without getting gravely into any tactics of detail. I hope that answered your question. I, I see you, uh, Councilman Cohen. I know you have your little one.
Yeah, apologies. Um, yeah, appreciated. Yeah, thank, thank you, Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner, and thank Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Porter?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I had two questions. Um, one related to the warrant apprehension grants. Um, could you describe your current efforts? Like what is, what is the process um for warrant apprehension that you all are currently um implementing now? And if you could speak to, like, once that process is shared, if you can speak to, um, if that grant is secured, um, what would be the timeline um for additional um execution with those grant funding? So what is that? Um, you know, what does that timeline look like to get something off the ground as far as an approach? Um, I'm more concerned about like the immediate efforts because um I, I believe it was mentioned in the presentation that warrant apprehension is an issue um that BPD is actually currently undergoing. And so I just wanted to make sure that we have some immediate next steps once those grant funds, um, should those grant funds come um to BPD.
Thank you so much for that question, Councilwoman Porter. And let me give it framed uh so that we're clear on context and I fully understand. So warrant apprehension task force is an existing part of our agency. Um, so when you hear us talking about initiatives, what we're trying to do, um, as we're, as all of the policing across the nation is challenged with resources, what we're trying to do is work smarter with the resources that we do have. And, and create initiatives that we're working with partners that gives us a larger bandwidth in that team to be able to go out and affect um arrests on the warrants that reach their caliber. So not every warrant in the agency goes to WATF. I want to be clear, there's a different caliber of warrant that they execute at their level, which is the high-risk warrants for crimes types such as homicide, non-fatal shooting, um armed robbery and domestic-related armed incidents and armed aggravated assaults, things that hit to that high threshold of vulnerability where it's of the most violent crime type. Um, the lesser offenses are served at the district level. Um, the middle warrants are served, that's what we refer to as our harm warrants that are served at the district level. But we'll bolster WATF in terms of initiative and take um some of our district action teams on a rotating basis. Not depleting a unit, but pulling a member out and bolstering the staff instead at WATF and having them assist to be able to serve more, more warrants as in building more capacity in WATF. Uh, and I don't want to speak out of term, um, and I'll let Michelle jump on in the terms of the grants, but the grants will help, will allow us to create more capacity through funding that we can do more initiatives and work more hours out of the day. Um, in terms of like budgeting, where budget
Yes.
Um, and, and work more with partners and have them do more work with us. Because oftentimes our partners are um working off of their own budgets to come and support the efforts of Baltimore City. And some of the grant funding is designed to be able to offer some support, saying, would you come more often and provide more resources if we had um more funding opportunity? But Michelle, if I missed anything about the grant, please don't hesitate.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, um, DC. And thank you, Councilwoman, for the question. Um, the, the bill for your information is SB five eighty-five and after this hearing, I can send you the link so you can read the, the bill language. Uh, it has gotten through the Senate, it is over at the House. Um, and it essentially provides grants to any uh, uh, law enforcement agency in the state of Maryland to do three things, reduce warrants in the agency's jurisdiction, uh, to increase coordination and cooperative efforts, which is kind of what uh DC um Briscoe talked about. And it's also coordination at the state and federal level, which we have both. Uh, and sometimes it's all, uh, and also to reduce number of outstanding warrants related to violent crimes. So it would be run in, uh, out of the GOCAP office, so they will need time to get this program up and running if it does in fact make it through the House uh and get signed by the governor. But it is something that we make it through the House uh, and get signed by the governor. But it is something that we have to support. Because any additional resources that will help our efforts is something that we need and uh, will both bolster the efforts that we already have. It's just, it's to add on to what we're already doing. But I'd be happy to send that to you.
Yeah. And the only reason why I bring that up is because of the correlation with open outstanding warrants and the violent crime that we are seeing in the city. So if we're truly going to see any type of reduction in numbers as it relates to violent crime in the city, I want to make sure that the, the indicator that's primarily, you know, primarily kind of driving that we have some sort of um, uh, accelerated action and implementation planning surrounding that. And I, I just want to be clear that when we're talking about, uh, when we're talking about uh, uh, open warrants, um, just for the public's knowledge, it is a inter, inter-agency and interconnected effort. Um, and so that level of coordination that is going to be required, not only from other city agencies, but community partners and BPD, et cetera, um, will have to be really, really, really nuanced and um, and, and explicit as well because one of the things that um, we are experiencing is, is we are past running out of time for um, managing and, and reducing um, violent crime in the city. And so I want to make sure that there's a sense of urgency, even though um, we are, um, and, and DC Briscoe, I know that you have a, a sense of urgency. I see you nodding, but I just want to make sure that we are, we have an accelerated extensive urgency because every day that we are missing related to um, coordination of this issue, um, lives can be lost. And, and I want to make sure that we, we are really, really, really focused on that. Um, as far as my next question actually has to do with um, you know, just the inter-agency approach with the state's attorney's office, the judges and BPD. Um, as we are experiencing, um, you know, it's considerable high crime and violent activity throughout the city. Can you speak to um, what you all have done as far as an inter-agency approach um, with the state's attorney's office and also the judges? Because we all know that BPD can't do this alone. There is a process that, that handles this type of, this type of criminal activity. I want to make sure that um, we, we are pulling all of the levers from each of the agencies and that we're moving, moving in a concerted effort. So I'm not aware of the inter-agency approach. So if you could speak to that, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll start off and other members of the team can, can join in because at every level, there's coordination between us and our state's attorney's office, all the way down to the detective level, working on, on cases like homicide cases. Um, I meet pretty regularly with our state's attorney to talk about uh, the work we're doing and uh, what we're concerned about. And I put this in the BPD Crime and Transformational Plan. I think it's on page 11. The relationship that we have to have in knowing the work we're doing, that we're turning over to them, that it's quali cal, quality caliber work that's making it through the criminal justice system. And if there are instances where it's not making it and their office has to refuse cases, we need to know about it. So that we can self-correct and make sure that we can correct any deficiencies. To that point, we've been in an, in an MOU, memorandum of understanding that, that uh, where we have an analyst that's funded by the mayor's office, but works out of the state's attorney's office to put together aggregate data on cases that come through homicides, shootings, robberies, gun cases. To make sure we have a clear understanding of what cases make it in and what cases don't, so that we can push correct. And we, we try to stay on top of that every month about our communication. And when there are times when either it's brought to my attention or someone else, uh, that there are issues, we meet pretty regularly and talk about that.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, DC. If I may add to that, we talk about coordination and collaboration, which are key um, in our partnership in criminal justice for any success that we'll have as a city. I can tell you that we have state's attorneys, um, um, buried, embedded rather in our B6. Our B6, so we have a, a regular line of coordination. Um, we have a monthly standing meeting. Um, so that's a regular cadence. So outside of that, um, I can tell you our detectives and line work together regularly. So we have different intersection points at different places and at different cadence to work with the state's office. Because to your point, um, if we're going to see success as a city, it's because we are working together. And that's us. Um, and just one other note, I wanted to kind of put a pin in for you for the, for the warrants. I didn't want you to think that we don't have collaboration or coordination with all the partners.
Oh, yes. Yeah, of, of course.
Peas, shares, like those are relationships in our um, initiatives. And we're not waiting for funding to, to use them. Um, and for funding to be used. Um, the funding is to, is to bolster, but we're all that we have a regular stream of communication with warrants and concern with the shares, with our state partners, with DPSCS and our federal partners through our US Marshals. That's regular coordination and collaboration that already exists. We're just working to bolster that.
Yeah, no, that, that, that definitely makes sense. And Mr. Chair, two data points that I'm hoping that can be requested by the committee um, is one, the current level, I mean, yeah, the current level of um, date, uh, warrant apprehension that's currently now, like that's being um, assessed and garnered by the uh, warrant apprehension team now and where they plan to go um, once the grant funds are there. Those two data points, I think, will help us assess just one, where, um, where current operations are um, for this particular team, but also um, where with additional grant funding as far as DC Briscoe, you mentioned kind of bolstering efforts, what that bolster will look like and how that bolster will help the current operations that you all have now. And then my second data point has to do with the um, the data, the data surrounding um, what the commissioner just mentioned about um, cases um, that are sent, or cases that are um, transferred and sent to the state's attorney's office. How many of those are getting cleared? And if they are not getting cleared, what are the documented reasons why? And then any corrective actions associated with those um, with those uh, ones that are not being clear? What, what's the corrective actions being taken um, from BPD and the state's attorney's office um, so that we can have a clear, um, you know, a clear kind of feedback with that?
And um, just one point of note, Councilwoman, one, I did send you the bill language. Two, the, the, the amount of money that is currently in the bill from the Senate side is only $2 million for the entire state. It is unclear yet how much will be allotted for each jurisdiction. So it will be impossible for us to say to you in a timely way how, what we would do with that. Um, we're, it, it, you know, once they send out, if it passes and they send out guidance, we're happy to brief you on that um, as soon as we can. But right now, I, so I don't want to hold up any responses to any of the other questions you all may have, waiting for that. So just.
Sure. And, and just, and Director, Director, um, if it was you all had, is it 2 million for the entire state or 2 million for each jurisdiction?
No, ma'am. It is 2 million for the state. So it's.
2 million for the state. And did you all provide a fiscal note, um, a fiscal note with any type of application or anything?
So it's, so it's not our bill. We just supported it.
Ah, okay. I see.
Um, again, I, I'm happy to talk to you offline.
Yeah, let, let's talk offline about that because I want to make sure that I have a clear understanding as far as the process. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any other questions? Um, before we go through a second round? Uh, I see Councilman Costello first and Councilman Glover, I got you right after.
Councilwoman Glover can go first. He, he spoke up first.
Yes, sir. Thanks. Uh, well, everyone, thanks, everyone, for being here uh, this uh, afternoon. I'm just, I'm just curious to know, like, exactly, how many officers do we have? How many officers are we short uh, here in Baltimore? And uh, what are we doing far as like to kind of recruit officers to come into Baltimore? I know, like, probably statewide, you know, everybody's trying to pull from a pool to try to, you know, staff their um, their agencies. But what are we doing here in Baltimore? And again, how short are we from reaching our goal of officers?
Thank you. We talk about that, that all the time, Councilman. Very good question. I have a couple of people on my team that are prepared to answer that. What I'll start by saying is we're budgeted for 2,640 officers. And then either my chief of staff or my deputy commissioner administration can tell you where we are with uh, where we are with the number of officers we actually have on the road now and what we don't have.
So Eric Molson, the chief of staff for the department. Um, we actually have this in our slide deck towards the appendix, but it's about 350 officer sworn vacancies that we currently have. Um, and that's against our current budget. Uh, as far as our strategy and tactics, we're actually introducing a new enhanced recruitment campaign this year that just launched a few weeks ago. Uh, Deputy Gillis, our Commissioner of Administration, can speak more about the resources we're putting into that exact effort you're referring to, Councilmember. Uh, and so I would refer to DC Gillis to answer that question.
Uh, thanks, Chief Councilman. Jim Gillis here. Uh, thank you. It's a great question and it is one that is, you know, critical to, to be answered by all of us. And, and quite frankly, is, is really what drives the day for the administrative bureau and for the rest of, of all of us. As the chief of staff, Eric just mentioned a moment ago, you know, we have a pretty robust digital marketing campaign, which is both, as you indicated in your question, it's got a national reach because we're competing against all the other police departments in the country. And it's got a local reach too, that is specific to hiring people from Baltimore. Um, we, we partnered with ID5, which is a local marketing company about three years ago, actually a little bit longer than that, launched the first version of this campaign three years ago and had immediate impact on the number of applications coming in both locally and from around the country. It doubled our applications immediately, almost overnight. Um, that has waned over the last couple of years just because the, the content has become a little bit stale. Obviously, there have been some changes nationally about, you know, impacting recruitment in the first place that need to be addressed in the campaign uh, as we try to attract high quality people. And so we have uh, not only added more investment so that we can do more digital marketing, meaning we're spending more money to do that. Um, we have total, done a total refresh after working through some focus groups with ID5. As Eric just mentioned, that just launched the content um, last, based, I guess, February, so about two months ago at this point in time. And we are starting to see the application numbers start to go back up again, which is, is very, very encouraging. Um, because the way that we have our recruitment section structured here, it's very precise and the process that we follow. And we track the data very precisely through the process. And so we know that if we can boost the application numbers, that the output at the end of the whole process after this waterfall drop off is going to be increasing as well. Um, and so uh, we're very encouraged about that. I should also mention that the mayor, the police commissioner, the fire chief, the schools CEO, I know have been meeting um, pretty frequently in the last couple of months. And, and then the next layer down from all those principals, including myself, have been meeting about re, actually really doing a pipeline from city schools to the public safety agencies the right way. Um, and having it be long lasting and impactful. Cause I think in years past, at least in the time that I've been here, you know, it's been, yes, we're going to do that some of the time. And then we chase whatever the next priority is of the day. This is meant to a CT, a real CTE, CTE program established to have people continually flowing into the public safety agency so that we have a homegrown pipeline. Um, but I, I, you know, I, we don't have any of the content for the new uh, marketing campaign in the slide deck here today, but would be happy to show it to you. It's actually really cool. So.
And then the other item that we did recently, again, this is with coordination with the mayor's team and with the police commissioner, we've, we've negotiated a new FOP contract. That, that contract allows us to come July 1st, we're going to be the highest paid starting salary for police officers in the state of Maryland. Right? And we're embedding that information into that recruitment marketing effort that DC Gillis just described. So we have, we, we did a coordinated strategy in trying to invest into that recruitment effort. And then we're going to turn around and make sure that we are blasting that communication across uh, not just the state of Maryland, of course, but the, but you know, nationwide recruitment effort. Uh, because that is what major cities are faced with the challenge of, of bringing in qualified talent. You know, per our recruitment process, making sure that everyone is a quality candidate, making sure that everything is vetted through our consent decree mandated process, um, so that we are getting the highest caliber uh, employees who are joining the force.
Cool. So out of those, out of those 350, are all those individuals you tried to hire that were short of, are they for patrol like officers or is it just like agency wide, we need to have 350 to make sure we have a full staff? And uh, also do we um, as a, as an agency, do we like hold back individuals from advancing those that we already have uh, in Baltimore City Police Department far as them advancing to a higher uh, position within the police department because we don't have yet that 350 uh, vacancies occupied? So are they like on the standby, on the wait or do we still promote within?
No, I, I'd love to answer that. We do not hold back. We are promoting. But as a matter of fact, in the FOP contract, we are mandated to promote and fill vacancies at the sergeant and lieutenant position within 45 days of a vacancy. So we're contractually obligated, contractually obligated to do that. And we do that so we can have the appropriate span of control in the field. So we can have the right level of supervision that, you know, there so that we don't find ourselves in a position where officers are unsupervised and bad things happen. So that's number one. Number two, um, we are critically short in every part of the agency. And while we are short in patrol, I would tell you that we're short in every, one of our specialized units as well. Specialized units that are not answering citizens' call for service. The, the thing about it is in order to beef up every, every aspect of the agency, it starts with recruitment, making sure we have the right recruitment strategy and the sufficient personnel to be able to handle the flow of people coming into the department. But then I have to always have the right amount of instructors at the academy to teach them. So when the floodgates open and they come, I have to be able to train them in the academy and then field training outside of the academy. And then we, then we begin to grow the ranks like in patrol and homicide, in district action teams and district detective units, in sex crimes, in SWAT, in internal affairs and public integrity bureau. Uh, all of those areas uh, have vacancies and are short, but that's why we're trying to work smart so we can maximize uh, our efforts, synchronize our efforts with our partners, reduce the amount of workload, but, but be smart about how we're going about our everyday delivery of police services. And even though we're short, I really have to compliment and take my hat off to the men and women of the department who go out there every single day and do this work and try to deter crime and apprehend people who commit it. Even in the days when we were 350 and almost 400 people short per day because of COVID, the men and women were still going out there doing that job every day. But, but thank you for, for bringing it, bringing that, that question to us.
Yeah, and just, and just to back up one time, Mr. Chair, that was the last one. And just to back up, it's only, and, and the reason why I asked because uh, you know, I've run around the entire district. So we have situations here at times and you know, I know when I do go up on the scene, sometimes I do see where, you know, many officers uh, are deployed probably at that location. It's trying to secure the, the, the area in which you guys need to do an investigation. And I was just wondering, you know, how many officers we were short because of the fact that when we take from, you know, different parts of the community to make sure that, that area where the crime was committed, um, you know, do we have officers to kind of make sure that they're still, you know, patrolling the rest of the community? So that's why I was wondering like, you know, how soon or you know, how could, can we get those, you know, that 350 uh, vacancy of officers, you know, employed with the city of Baltimore? So again, thank you uh, for your, uh, your answers and um, look forward to us getting those 350 officers on the team.
Uh, quick, quick, quick follow-up question. Uh, with the 350 officers, Commissioner, can you tell me how many of those or if all of them or any, any, any otherwise have been salary saved in order, order to pay for other things across the department?
Well, I think with the, with the vacancies, the money is actually converted to overtime. It's how we flex the department to make ourselves feel like we're fully staff and look like we're fully staffed. And so the conversion, the conversion dollars allows us to bring people, keep people on later, bring people in earlier. Uh, when we have things uh, that uh, our non-discretionary units like our mobile metro unit or our SWAT team, our homicide detectives having to stay along at a handle homicides, all of, of that money converts helps us to do that work in the absence of the people who would otherwise be here doing.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Costello. Your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, two questions. First, uh, Chief Molson, I think, mentioned that the starting salary is going to be higher um, than for incoming police officers than anywhere else in the state of Maryland. That is certainly welcome news. Um, my question is, um, how does that escalate over time uh, for a standard patrol officer or standard detective and CID? And by standard- And by standard, I mean someone that's not a white shirt, right? Like in in the command structure. And how does that escalate, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the line?
That's a great question, Councilmember. So the starting pay for our agency will be a $60,000 a year salary. And that is the, on a day one, as a police recruit in the police academy. And so when that person matriculates through the academy, ends up in to a patrol officer position, you know, they then earn an additional now $2,000 a year bonus for being in patrol once they complete patrol duties for additional years. That's on top of the $60,000 pay. If, once they hit a one-year anniversary, they get a pay adjustment, a two-year anniversary, a three-year anniversary. Every year of service, the way that the FOP agreement is structured, results in another longevity essentially adjustment. So it's a step adjustment every year of service. And it's incremental, but it's significant. And it allows that member to, again, take that pay throughout the schedule of, you know, their, their 25 to 30-year career here in the department, hopefully. And so for us, when we did the analysis for the targeted pay raises, we looked at a lot on the front end of the scale. That front end of the scale, the first five years or so, was where we saw the most attrition happening in the agency. So that is where a lot of the city's investment in this agreement was really targeted and focused to ensure that we are not giving, you know, that competitor advantage in that first few years to ensure that we're doing what we can to retain the talent when they are leaving in our data or where our data show. We also have shift differential. You know, this is evening and night shift work. A lot of that's built in patrol. But any kind of evening and shift night work, that's another dollar an hour on top with our new agreement. We have educational incentives, and this is a big turning point for the department. You know, associate's degrees, bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, all of which carry with it an embedded tensionable stipend that carries with them through the life of their career. These are all enhancements that we now built into the agreement. And again, follow them up through sergeant to lieutenant and even through command. And so these are things for which, when we looked at that targeted approach, we wanted to make sure that through the life of their career, they're seeing those incentives, they're seeing those opportunities. You know, even if they're deciding to choose a, a different path outside of patrol. And so that's, that's a big, big thing for us. Wanted to make sure that, you know, we're looking at that pay compression, the space between the ranks. And all of these things, you know, when you're looking at the first couple of years on the job, an officer could be pulling in straight time, you know, $70,000 to $75,000 a year, depending on if they're still in patrol, which is where we need folks the most. That's an important thing for us. There's still overtime opportunities as well. And so we're hoping that that creates that competitive package that really brings people into the force and retains the folks that we have here. If that, if that answered your question.
Again, 26 months in a pandemic, and I don't know where the mute button is. That definitely answers the question. First, second, I appreciate the thoughtful approach to it. Third, I would note that wage compression is a very complicated economic issue when we talk about salaries. And when we, when a municipality or a municipal agency has a need that, let's say, outweighs a previous need that it had, or priorities change, or or whatever the case may be, there ends up being multiple buckets of employees that that wage compression impacts, right? So we have people that haven't even started with the department or maybe in the academy right now, that these things are going to affect the duration of their 20 and hopefully longer year career with BPD. Then we have existing folks. And I would only ask that command staff, as you continue to make changes to compensation packages in order to make them more competitive and hopefully the, the best suite of compensation in the state of Maryland, because that's what we need and that's what our police officers deserve in Baltimore City for what we ask them to do on a daily basis, that you also take into consideration folks that are in that other bucket that are already there. Because someone who's has eight or 12 or 16 years of service has extreme value to this department, just as someone who is a new recruit that we hope and expect to keep for 20-plus years with the department. So I, I will take the nod of the head to mean that you appreciate that. I know you appreciate the complexity of the wage compression issue, but that you all will continue to think about all buckets of, of employees, whether current or incoming or future perspective. Does that make sense?
It does, Councilmember, and we absolutely do take that holistic review of this package when we go towards collective bargaining on our rounds of doing so. Our current agreement that we've agreed to will take us through mid-year 2024 or the end of fiscal year 2024. And so, you know, we, we continuously look at it with the conditions of where we are. And we will always be mindful of the impact of our negotiated settlements on retention as well as recruitment. Because it is both sides of the coin that we need to ensure that we are growing in size.
Excellent. Really appreciate the, the thoughtful approach. Second question is around the crime plan in general. I'm frustrated with the lack of progress in terms of addressing violent crime, as I know you all are. When can we expect to see demonstrable progress? And by demonstrable progress, I mean a sustained, a sustained period of reduced violent crime under this current crime plan.
Great question, Councilman. Good to see you. We put this, the crime plan is also a department transformational plan, because we had to make sure that the department, the infrastructure in the department was sound, that the personnel inside the department were all sound and the people in the right positions to lead the effort. There's so much we put into this that we know, we knew needed, we know needed improvement. What we're hoping is, and what we're working toward, is how the improvements within the department translate into the offenders making different decisions. Because what, what we look at and what we talk about constantly is reducing crime. But reducing crime, crime is actually committed by, by people who make the decisions to do it. Our efforts have to translate into the offender making different decisions. But that's not just a policing alone task that requires all of us, and it does mean all of us in every part of the criminal justice system, to pause the offender to make different decisions. It's not just about reducing it, it's about changing their minds about why they do it. And so that's what the holistic plan and comprehensive plan internally with the transformational plan does. But that's what the crime prevention plan holistically and comprehensively at the city level, in the mayor's vision, does to help the offender, number one, have a pathway away from violence along with heavy enforcement against those who are committing, committing violence. And we're doing both at the same time. You know, as we begin to reach these at-risk individuals and as we begin to have preventions and interventions on those who are not yet making decisions to be involved in crime, I think we're poised to see progress in, in the very near future. And I can't talk about what percentage of decreases we'll see. Those decreases come in the decisions of other people who are committing crimes that we want to deter them from committing them. What I can tell you is that we're, we're building the best infrastructure in the department, in the city that, that can accomplish that. What we need, and, but COVID didn't help us any. COVID didn't help us any because for 18 months, we had no trials, no grand juries, no indictments. And we're now backlog and coming, you know, working hard to get out of that backlog. I said this earlier when I talked about general deterrence. You have would-be offenders or people watching offenders, looking to see what happens to them to decide whether or not they're going to engage in crime or not. And we're working to deter them from making that bad decision as well. But that's what, that's what all of us are at the table working on, making sure that we can deter people now from committing crime, apprehending people who committed, and changing the minds of those who are thinking about committing in the future.
Commissioner, thank you. It's good to see you. I appreciate your response. In my mind, and this is a very simplistic view of things, there are two goals of this police department. One is to transform this, this department into compliance with the consent decree. And I think that you have made incredible progress on, on that first piece of it. And the second piece is dealing with the crime fight and ensuring that people feel safe in the communities that they live and work. And right now, people do not feel safe in the communities that they live and work. And I think a lot of the things that you just outlined are responsibilities that are outside of the scope of the police department. They are things like intervention programs and early detection programs and rehabilitation programs and social work-led programs. And while I acknowledge that those things are all part of the larger picture and, and kind of different pieces to the puzzle, I remain concerned that, and, and this goes back to our first meeting in City Hall when, when I had the pleasure of first meeting you back in February of 2019. You said to me, there needs to be a set of certain consequences when individuals commit crimes. And those set of certain consequences do not currently exist in our city. And I recognize that there's only so much that the Baltimore Police Department can do to make those consequences take effect. But we need the police department to be doing everything humanly possible to do that and to pressure our partners in law enforcement and other areas to ensure that there are, in fact, consequences. Too often, we continue to hear from your officers on the street that they have done the things that they are required to do and able to do by the law and, and place individuals under arrest that have committed violent crimes like carjackings with a gun. And those individuals are out on the street. Someone needs to take responsibility for those individuals, because those individuals, frankly, should not be on the street in our communities because they are not safe to be around, because they are committing violent crimes against law-abiding, tax-paying residents of this city. So I hope that you will continue to use your position and the police department's clout and, and budget and influence and other things of that nature to put pressure on our partners to ensure that individuals are held accountable for violent crimes in our community. If you commit a violent crime in our community, you should not be on the street, period. Thank you for taking that into consideration, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Elegantly stated, I think, I think everybody here agrees. I'm gonna do a round of one question. So each, each member will have one question, and then we're, we're going to actually move on to a presentation from Monty about GPRS before getting into the five-year plan. So my next question actually is a piggyback to the conversation going between the Commissioner and Councilman Costello. One of the things I noticed in the, the course of the presentation was for homicide suspects and for non-fatal shooting suspects, that 80% of the homicide suspects had a previous record and 50% of those folks were violent repeat offenders. And that for non-fatal shooting suspects, 65% of those folks had a record and 34% of those were violent repeat offenders. As we think about the system and how it works together, realizing that the department has one key role in that is catching the bad guys. Thinking about, I'm curious, do we currently track if offenders that are violent repeat offenders or hold illegal handguns are held without bail when we do catch them? Do we track that data? And then what is that data showing us?
Thank you for that conversation, Mr. Chairman. I can tell you, we've been working with our, our partners because there's a certain amount of data that, that we're challenged with being able to see. So we've been having some meetings with our DPSCS partners to find out, to get the information you speak of. Because we ultimately want to be able to say, across the process to adjudication, what has happened with a case after we've made an arrest. So we're working on that to that end. I know that different parts, to include the state, has their data. We're, we're working on that. We don't currently have it at our disposal that I can tell you from arrest to adjudication, what has happened with the suspect. I can work with the partners and particularly specifically ask them, but we're not getting that as an active feed. So, but we're working to that point now. We've been in some, we've had two meetings thus far to be able to track it and answer that question fully.
That, that's really helpful to know, I think. So going back, and you guys are going to hear me mention a lot of, a lot about gun stat until we get it back up and, and running. But that was something we used to track in gun set. I thought was really helpful for strategically determining which folks should not be on the street. Specifically, folks with gun charges and especially those that have been violent in the past, whether it was just an assault, but then have been caught with a gun charge. So, and thinking about how we can be more coordinated in our approach. I'm more than happy to provide any assistance from my time serving the city. But I think that'd be really helpful in hopefully interviewing in instances where folks are let back out and then are able to be party of or be, you know, a part of any violence thereafter. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Let's see if I see any other hands up. I see Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Porter, and then Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question I had was around City Watch. We had a emergency meeting in Howard Park following a mass shooting in, in the area. And one of the things that came up in that community meeting was questions and concerns about the City Watch camera in that area. I'm, I'm not necessarily looking for a response to one specific camera, but more broadly, can, can someone speak to the quality control measures in place to make sure that those cameras are operating effectively? How often, I guess, any sort of dialogue around the, the CCTV network in the city? And as I guess, a quick part B, are we looking to expand the program in the coming year?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Burnett. I'll start, and if any one of my team members needs to jump in with anything more specific, I welcome that. I can tell you that we're always evaluating the cameras and its operability. As you know, technology changes and some of our cameras are older than others. And we're under undergoing a process to change some of our cameras out. And we're all always evaluating whether or not we're having any challenges, not just with the mechanics of the camera, but if, if any tree brush or anything is growing in the view of the cameras. So those are things that we, with regularity, we work with our city government partner and be sick to be able to get new equipment, fix any outages. So some of the outages are sometimes not related to the camera in and of itself, but what feeds the camera. So there could be a multitude of reasons, if a camera's not out, why it's out. But that's something that is brought pretty quickly to our attention because we're regularly checking on our camera and our camera network and the life of, of the equipment that we use. And so in terms of growing the network, that always comes down to dollars. I know that we've recently added some cameras. And we're always examining our budget and budget opportunities, whether that's through grants or philanthropy to be able to enhance our network. That's our goal. And those things are, are staples in our effort to combat crime, especially to give us the ability to be in more places or have more eyes in more places than we're in.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge a member of the committee, Councilwoman Ramos, and Councilman Stokes as well have joined us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies for being late. I have been listening since my drive from Annapolis. So thanks, everybody, for your, your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter, yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. One of the additional questions I had related to, excuse me, how the police department is leveraging the Strategic Decision Support Centers and the predictive policing software to target gun violence in the districts that they're in. Can you all speak to that?
So I want to caution here, predictive policing analytics, we don't use predictive policing analytics in the way to be able to say, we know by probability, this is where an incident is going to occur. There's in the way to be able to say, we know by probability, this is where an incident is going to occur. There's um uh, 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 data analysis, the software that we use before our S D S Cs, we use those in a multitude of ways. And let me give you an example. Um, we're able to, to hear uh, get our shot spot alerts through that room and um and, and have units, they respond, it comes across our, our radio channel, but to start taking any looks at any cameras that's in that direction and uh making sure that units are responding. We use that room that an incident occurs, we're starting to make link analysis in the field level and that information is transferred in real time to other districts that it may impact or affect. Um, we also use that room to be able to look at our license plate reader um that we're answering and responding to the hits and we're deploying resources in areas that we're getting hits. Um, it is a, a great tool, a great resource when you talk to the districts that have them in place. There are currently four districts that have um S D S Cs um in, in their uh districts. Um, the central, the eastern, the uh western and the southwest, those district commanders are love them and what we have those districts doing are, are working alongside the districts that are not yet equipped so that we can build capacity um across our city and, and all benefit while we're working to um secure funding for the remaining districts to have this amazing tool. Um, but we use it in a multitude of ways to be able to um, you know, have our units in the appropriate places and respond, um intervening to prevent crime.
Yeah, that, that answers my question. Um, DC Briscoe, I just want to follow up on that question with regard to um the other districts that are experiencing violent crime, and we can talk offline about this. I know we have to move towards the next hearing, but I'd like to know what the integrated strategies are with the other jurisdictions that don't necessarily have that technology because primarily for the Southern District, which is my primary district, I noticed that wasn't one of the districts that has the technology and we're, we're experiencing some of the more violent crime across the city. And so um, just to kind of like make that connection.
Yes, and I just want to be careful with my language. Uh, S D S C is where it started for us and we've translated their B six in Baltimore.
Okay, okay, okay.
Want to fall prey to, to use a common language. My, my peers are slapping my hand. I did. Um, and, and yes, uh Major Valti reminds me.
Yes.
That has it, he's coming from the western where they had it and he has made his hard pitch to be the next district um to receive the benefits of that technology because he is poised um to use it wisely because he knows his capabilities. Um, so again, that's uh my shameless plug that we're always trying to secure funding to be able to take this resource because we know that it pays dividends. And what we do is partner. So for instance, your, your, the Southern District, you brought it up, they're right at the border of, of the, of Anaronda County. They talk regularly. Um, they're sharing intelligence, they're sharing information, they're in each other's meetings and they talk in real time. So just because a district isn't equipped with the resources, we take the process steps and we take those lessons learned and translate those um lessons learned and processes to other districts. And again, the southwest and western do support the Southern District. Um, those two B si, uh B six do support the Southern District when they're experiencing violence and crime um to be able to share information and intelligence. And they use, they all, they all have analysts. So though he does not yet have, the district does not yet have a B, uh B six, does have an analyst. So the analyst is able to come behind the scenes and support him in a way um that the other districts that have a B six did.
Sure. Thank you so much, DC, and thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to kind of piggyback a little bit off of what uh Councilman Costello has said early on, but I also want to get kudos um to the Baltimore City Police Department because uh you know, over here in the Eastern District, we had our challenges. And uh, you know, it was one point in time where uh, you know, the Commissioner, the Command Staff and you, Mr. Chair, we sat at a table, we had a conversation and uh, you know, I, I had an opportunity to really have a one-on-one with our major over here in the district and how we can come together and partner to make things better over here in our district. And uh, like the Commissioner said early on, you know, this is an all hands on deck approach that we all have to do our part. And um, I had gotten a call one time from the captain because we had an individual uh in the community that was, the other was a mid to health issues, some challenges that he had. And uh, he was really, really irate. I mean, just going all over the place here on Main Street and he was upset because of the fact that he didn't get his reward that was issued to him for filing his tax, you know, how to give the one hundred dollar rebate and all that kind of stuff. And he went, he went off a little bit and he happened to mention, I don't want to hear about nothing from nobody, but I want to talk to my councilperson. So Captain Dacre happened to just give me a call because the individual was, you know, just going crazy and then actually causing a whole lot of havoc on, in the community. And uh, myself and my team, we just happened to go down there because Captain, you know, asked if I could come down. And it, it, just working together, you know, myself and the Eastern District, how we was able to uh kind of get this individual to calm himself down because he was able to have that one-on-one conversation with me. And uh, it could have escalated, you know, to a whole different um avenue, but because of the relationships that we have built over here in the Eastern District for us, uh me being the councilperson and us collaborating with the community and having those community walks and those talks to have the community to believe and trust and uh not only me as a councilperson, but for me to introduce and have that conversation with them with their Eastern District um officers. So I just want to say, um, you know, I, I guess kudos to uh my officers that I'm proud of over here in the Eastern District. I know we, the city still has its challenges at times, but I'm mentioning about the, the conversations and the communications and the um the uh, the walks and the talks that we're having with our neighbors that really, really makes a big difference in our community. When they could feel like, you know what, you know what, I can call maybe my councilperson. And you built a relationship with them as well because when you see things that aren't going right as you travel the district, it's easy for you to make that phone call because you have that relationship. Hey, look, major, hey, captain, even the officer. Hey, look, just cause you can make a, you know, a ride past X Y Z, let's just clear that corner. And that conversation and, and that relationship, it works. It works. So again, I just want to get kudos to you guys, um because I do know you guys are, you know, doing an outstanding job. Baltimore City, like many, you know, big cities, has its challenges. But um, I just want to say, like the Commissioner said early on, this is really a all hands on deck approach how we uh curb the crime here in Baltimore. So again, thank you, you guys, for what you do um for our city. And even my colleagues, you know, for, you know, that's why we have these conversations. It's not just to know that beat each other up and things of that nature, but just to have these conversations so we can know what's going on um in each one of our respective districts and how we can help you just as well as you guys can help us. So we can just, you know, again, you know, save what we do have here in Baltimore. So again, I appreciate each and every last one of you guys, but that's my uh, kind of sort of my uh comment.
Thank you so much.
Um, okay, we are going to um transition over to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement for an update on G V R S.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, give me one moment while I share my screen here.
Sure thing.
To the public and for the record, my name is Shante Jackson. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. I am joined by other members of the Monty team today, including members of the Group Violence Reduction Strategy Team uh and members of the National Technical Advisor Team for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy, who I'll introduce in a little bit. You all have already heard B P D share what crime statistics look like in Baltimore and provide an update on B P D's um plan to some extent, um which we all know is one of the subplans of Baltimore's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. Um, just by way of introduction, over the next few minutes, I'll be talking about questions that are at the top of minds for both the committee and the public. Um, questions like, why are we seeing an uptick in crime? Uh, what are the trends telling us? What are we doing right now? What's the current status of the G V R S strategy? What do we know about other G V R S implementations across the country and what's next for us as we do the work? So first I'll say that uh we all know that public safety is a public health issue. When we talk about why Baltimore's seeing an uptick in crime, I'd remind us of what we just heard a few minutes ago from both the Health and the Police Commissioners. First, that there isn't just one reason why we're seeing the upticks. That this isn't just a question confronting Baltimore, but is one confronting uh cities across the nation. That people are coming out of social isolation as a result of a global pandemic that we're down in what we consider societal norms, that there's a proliferation of guns. We know that just based on the statistics that B P D shared with regard to um their gun seizures and that includes ghost guns. That there are economic impacts at play and that there are um to Councilman Cohen's and the Health Commissioner's point, a compounded impact associated with mental health as a result of the physical health pandemic. Um, in November, we started to see the beginning of the reopening of Baltimore City. And we've learned as a result of taking a look at uh motives and uh through the problem analysis, that there's a lack of healthy conflict resolution happening in our city. We've heard our mayor say that repeatedly. So as you all know, Monty is tasked obviously with implementing a comprehensive, long-term and sustainable approach to driving reductions in violence. And I want to be really clear in saying that we're also engaged in the immediate response, specifically the work that we're doing on the Group Violence Reduction Strategy and the creation of a community violence intervention ecosystem. The urgency is now for us and it's what's driving us in the way that we prioritize our work as an agency. It's why G V R S was one of the first things that we built the foundation for. Now, by way of context, uh, I want to talk briefly about how the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that Monty received as a part of the mayor's investment are going towards this dual approach of both the Group Violence Reduction Strategy and Community Violence Intervention. As you all can see from this pie chart, a little over ten million dollars is allocated for community violence intervention. And as a friendly reminder here, and despite what we're seeing be an incorrect narrative that's being fueled by some in the press, we want to make sure that we note that no ARPA dollars at all have gone to safe streets at this time, none. The balance of those funds that were allocated for gun violence prevention, a little north of thirteen million, are allocated for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy for a total of a little north of twenty-three million dollars associated with gun violence prevention. So let's talk about what we know about what's been driving violence in Baltimore. And uh in doing that, I think it's appropriate that we are here today to really talk about the problem analysis that we did to inform the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. I want to note that the, the problem analysis itself represents a fixed period in time. That the last statistical analysis of trends that we did um was completed in the second half of twenty twenty-one. It was a five-year analysis. It's what we use to inform our soft launch of the Group Violence Reduction Strategy in the Western District uh in January. It's important to note that we are in the process of updating the problem analysis for the Western District before doing that same work at a larger scale. And we plan on having an updated analysis of the Western District completed by the third quarter of this year um so that we uh know exactly where and how to scale the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. So what we're going to be sharing with you all are the most recent trends that we have about what's driving violence in our city. Um, the last thing that I'll say before turning it over to um our technical advisors here is that Monty, City Hall, the Baltimore Police Department, the State's Attorney's Office, aren't implementing the Group Violence Reduction Strategy by ourselves. We're joined today by local and national technical advisors who've been spending a lot of time here on the ground in Baltimore. Um, and so I'm going to turn it over to our local technical advisor, Jeremy Biddle, to walk us through the problem analysis. And in a bit, we'll turn it over to our national technical advisors to talk a little bit more about um the work that they've done with us so far and what they see across the country. Jeremy, when you're ready, let me know when you need me to advance slides, please.
Thank you, uh, Council Chair and Council uh members for the opportunity to discuss the problem analysis results for the Western District. As Director Jackson mentioned, my name is Jeremy Biddle. I'm a special advisor for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy and I'm part of a national technical assistance team uh supporting the city and all its partners in this effort. Um, here I'm going to discuss an analysis that uh we did of uh the violence dynamics in the Western District. It was used to really um understand the drivers of violence and also determine whether or not the fact pattern we were seeing of violence in the Western District was consistent with the uh Group Balance Reduction Strategy as an approach. Um, what, so this first slide, and I will kind of give the headline uh talking points um as we go along, was just to explain the rationale behind why the Western District, why did we start there? Um, given that, you know, we have violence in all of the city's districts. Uh, the simple reason was when we do a five-year analysis of uh, of, of violence dynamics, um.
Forgive me.
I mean, no worries. Uh, a five-year analysis of, of um, of homicide and non-fatal shooting dynamics uh throughout the city, the Western District is the front runner uh and is the top in terms of chronically violent districts. That was the basis we used to select the Western District as a starting point. Uh, next slide, please. What we did in this analysis was really try to understand what could we learn about the population that's most directly affected by gun violence? That means homicide and non-fatal shooting victims, suspects and persons of interest, interest. What do we know about their age, their demographics? Uh, what do we know about their connections to the criminal justice system? Uh, from there, we did an analysis of um incidents of violence, what we call homicide incident review, in which we went over sixty-nine victim cases starting in uh twenty twenty through mid-May of twenty twenty-one to understand motives and from there to understand if there's a nexus with group dynamics. And once establishing that nexus with group dynamics, we capped everything off with an analysis of what we actually understand of groups. Again, all of this setting the stage for the design of the um initial rollout of the strategy. In this slide here, uh we look at victims and suspects and what's notable is that um the population tends to be older than what the public might think. Uh, most often we hear of a youth violence epidemic, which there certainly is, but we also see that uh there's an older population that's um very highly impacted by this uh, by this epidemic. And if we take sixteen to twenty-four and twenty-five to thirty-four collectively, we're looking at over seventy percent of the population uh most directly impacted. So from a framing perspective, that's the population we're most concerned about uh and that we want to actually be able to reach through this kind of approach. Uh, next slide, please. Here, we uh wanted to basically see um for homicide and non-fatal shooting victims and suspects, what do we know about uh, about ties to the criminal justice system? The simple question is, are they known to the criminal justice system? Uh, do they have criminal histories? And the overwhelming answer is yes. Upwards of eighty percent of victims and suspects are known to the criminal justice system. And what's interesting here is to note the um, the similarities between the victim and offender populations, which is uh not necessarily very surprising. Next slide, please. So we've established that they're known. Now the question is known for what? Uh, we see that on average, this population has nearly twelve um, uh twelve charges, not only for violent crime, uh but also for a entire host of different kinds of offenses, uh ranging from disorderly and properly, property charges all the way to violence charges. Uh, this is a phenomenon known as cafeteria style offending that um people who are engaged in gun violence are not only engaged in gun violence, but also tend to be prolific offenders. Uh, so this is completely consistent with all the literature and findings that we've seen in other jurisdictions. Uh, next slide, please. From there, we want to see, dig a little bit deeper into criminal justice system involvement. We see that um upwards of eighty percent of the population has been convicted, uh over forty percent for felonies. We also see that uh they, um, you know, at the time of the incident, uh upwards of twenty-five percent is actually under community supervision. Uh, and over seventy percent had been under prior uh community supervision. What's notable, and this is why we kind of take out the factoid on the bottom, is that six, over sixty percent of this population has been previously incarcerated. And that of that sixty-one point two percent, thirty-nine percent of the twenty twenty victims and suspects were killed or committed a shooting in less than one year of release from incarceration, which points to the importance of reentry and reentry supports. Um, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Here, this is the results of the homicide incident reviews that we conducted, the interviews that we did with the primary detective, homicide detectives on the 69 victim cases. We tried to unpack motive. We also tried to, again, establish that nexus with group dynamics. What's notable here are a couple of things. First, there is no clear frontrunner in terms of motive. In a lot of other jurisdictions, we might see intergroup disputes or gang-on-gang violence be one of the frontrunners. But here, we see that it's much more so a pretty even mix, ongoing personal disputes, internal group disputes, drug-related disputes. We also note that economic motives more often than not are not the trigger for a homicide incident. They're certainly present, but present in under a fifth, under a fifth of all of the cases reviewed. We also found that, and this is what circled in the bottom right of the screen, of all of these incidents, a group member was either a victim, suspect, or person of interest in 70% of all of the incidents. So that nexus is very much present. And finally, a takeaway from this slide is that there were elements of retaliation and retaliatory dynamics in over half of the incidents that we reviewed, which shows that they're not only predictable and patterned, but that they're preventable. Again, a very important finding in terms of establishing the baseline for this kind of approach. Next slide, please. And then finally, we asked the question of, well, what do we know about groups? So we see that groups have a strong tie with violence and violence dynamics. What do we know about groups? Here, we did what we call group audit, actually multiple group audits, in which we brought frontline officers and, you know, law enforcement personnel in one setting, also had similar focus groups with street outreach workers to see what we know about the groups that are criminally active in the Western District. This is just a broad sketch of the groups that we identified in this initial analysis. We're actually, as Director Jackson mentioned, refreshing these results as we speak. But the important takeaway here is that groups and group members, if we're looking at the upper bounds of the estimate, we have 735 group members in the Western District, which account for under 2% of the district population with ties to as much as 70% of all homicide incidents. So this is really to say that it's really a small percentage of the population overall that's directly connected with an overwhelming share of the violence. And this is, again, a finding that is very much consistent with not only prior problem analyses done in Baltimore City, but similar studies that have been done in other jurisdictions. And I believe that's my last slide.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
So before we dive into the current status of the group violence reduction strategy in the Western District, folks, I want to share what's happened since the last time we provided a quarterly update in December. When we were last before the council, GBRS had not been launched yet. We have laid the foundation of working relationships between the tri-party principals, specifically the mayor, police commissioner, and the state's attorney. Shortly after, our technical advisors visited us in December, where they made recommendations to us to make sure that we had the ability to have a soft launch in Q1. They also reminded us that we needed to have a methodical approach to a launch. You all might recall me saying this wasn't going to be a champagne bottle burst off the side of a cruise ship, but rather a very concerted, methodical effort around what it was going to take to get GBRS right this time for Baltimore. So we fully staffed both our GBRS team and our CBI team. The last time that we were here for you, this is what the gun violence prevention lane looked like with a staffing of the associate director and only one team member in the CBI and the GBRS spaces respectively. Since then, we have hired a deputy director for GBRS to oversee the overall strategic direction of the work to prepare for direct communications and to bring in our intervention partners. These collectively, the CBI sublane and the GBRS sublane are the two direct violence intervention strategies that MONC leads. And as we move deeper into the implementation of the group violence reduction strategy, we're going to see even more connections between these two bodies of work. We also made it a point to actively build our in-house data capabilities for the first time as an office so that we're going to be ready to launch what we're calling GBRS Stat by the third quarter. So we're targeting a 7-1 launch here and are really excited about that. So let's talk about the current statistics. So where are we here? What I'm going to be sharing with you over the next few slides are representative of what's happening in the Western as it relates to the work that we're doing from January through last weekend, right? And so as we think about weekly shooting reviews happening every Tuesday, what you're looking at right now is a snapshot in time through last Saturday or the 26th of March. From a shooting review perspective, you can see that we, BPD has been able to garner 12 handgun charges, one possession with intent to distribute, one handgun violation warrant, that through local investigation that we've seen 10 indictments come down, five of which have been served, five are outstanding. And then as a broader group, that we've completed direct communications for 12 total candidates. In some cases, law enforcement only is doing those direct communications and in other cases, we're doing full custom notifications. You see that we've got 10 folks referred here for the full notification and five of those have been completed. What this slide is meant to represent for you all is that this is absolutely, we want to give you the opportunity to take advantage of supports and services that are available to you and the swift and sure action of a law enforcement response to folks who continue to break the law and/or folks that we have investigatory intel on that would drive us to make arrests. This here is another snapshot around what we are seeing as it relates to homicides and non-fatal shootings in the Western since this soft launch. I want to be really clear here in saying that the team's cautiously optimistic about what we're seeing. You can obviously see that homicides between 11 and 326 are down 9% year-over-year and non-fatal shootings are down 15% year-over-year. We know that it's early. And so we want to note that we aren't operating at scale yet at the Western District. We do think that the GBRS work is playing a role here. But it might be too soon to tell. We are seeing these declines, though. And to put these declines into perspective, when we look at other chronically violent districts like the Eastern District, the Southwestern District, the Southern District, the Western District is actually faring much better. Around service referrals, you all know that we've got two service partners here. Roka is our service partner for folks who are group-involved and are between the ages of 16 and 24. And Yap is our service partner for folks who are 25 years and older. We have done a total of 20 service referrals through that snapshot in time that I mentioned before, some of which have been with custom notifications and some of which have been without. Of the 20, we have had 12 successful contacts. We've also engaged community because community very much has to be a part of this joint effort with MONC, with BPD, the State's Attorney's Office, and other law enforcement agencies. And so we've trained two cohorts of community members in the Western around what moral voice looks like in assisting with direct communications. And we've had two sessions, one in January, one in February. And in fact, in our very first delivery, we had community members participate as community moral voice in a direct communication. This is what the governance of our work looks like. As I mentioned a couple of slides ago, our shooting reviews happen every Tuesday, followed by a coordination meeting on Wednesday, sometimes into Thursday. We're having active investigation meetings on a weekly basis. BPD and MONC have coordination meetings just cross-agency. The GBRS Stat meeting hasn't started happening yet. We mentioned that that's going to be ready on 7-1. And then we have a monthly meeting with the tri-party principals so that they're able to make decisions together in real time. So the last thing that I'll close with before I turn it over to our national technical advisors is like the real-life implications of what success of this strategy looks like. There was a shooting review in the Western District that happened not too long ago where we saw the murder of a man's brother happen. It became very clear to us through intelligence that we captured that the brother was planning retaliatory violence against a suspected shooter for his brother. We worked with community-based partners. We worked with the Department of Parole and Probation and others to arrange a meeting with this brother so that we could have a conversation with him about the course of action that he was thinking about taking. Once we located him, we did a custom notification that involved law enforcement and community members where we talked really about what he needed to feel supported. We talked about us having a clear understanding of what his intentions were and talking to him about what he would lose if he decided to take that course of action. I would say that this, this man was very receptive to the message because of the way that it was delivered and whom it was delivered by, because it's not just about the message, but also about who the messengers are and is currently getting the supports that he needs. He's been connected to the appropriate service provider. He also needed mental health support, which is being provided, and he's getting intensive life coaching right now through this program. And he'll continue to get it until he and his case manager decide together that it's no longer needed for him. At this point, I'm going to turn over the last three slides to our technical advisors. I believe we've got David, I'm sorry, that we've got Vaughn Crandall on the line, who will need to elevate to speaker so that he can speak to these last three slides. Vaughn, when you're ready?
Deputy Director Jackson, can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, committee members. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. My name is Vaughn Crandall and I'm the Executive Director of the California Partnership for Safe Communities. We are part of the National Training and Technical Assistance Team under the umbrella of the University of Pennsylvania and also working in partnership with David Mohammed of the National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform, who also is joining us today. We have several decades of experience in supporting local violence reduction efforts, including GBRS efforts. And we have been working in close partnership with MONC and BPD really since last year on a weekly basis to support their, their design and implementation efforts of GBRS. Most recently, myself and other members of our team were in Baltimore two weeks ago to assess the work as of mid-March and to work with the team to reflect on the early launch efforts today, including strategic law enforcement, outreach and life coaching, and direct communication. We also worked with the team to diagnose, you know, key capacities, what's going well, gaps, as well as to help the team set cycle-two priorities and benchmarks, which in our experience is particularly important as we look to mid-year and to laying a successful foundation to scale to other districts. Our overall assessment is that the Baltimore GBRS effort is progressing fairly well. And we recommended a series of steps to ensure that the pilot continues to, to develop as Director Jackson has just laid out, as well as lays a solid foundation to scale to other districts. These recommendations included expanding custom notification meetings like the one Director Jackson just described and life coaching referrals in the near term, given that the MONC team is in place, that the intervention partners are in place, and that all those capacities have now been successfully built. We also recommended engaging in a wave of direct communication of meetings like this as a follow-up to current impending enforcement actions. That's an important step in our experience to help folks who are involved in current risk dynamics step away after law enforcement operation. We also recommended to begin to plan to include other high-violence districts in the shooting review management meeting, which is very important for the development of intelligence that this strategy needs. And we recommend beginning to plan for expansion to another very violent district by the end of the year. Next slide, please. So, so one question you may be considering is, this really sounds like a lot of work and what do we know about the payoff? What do we understand about the effectiveness of GBRS? And there really has been a very large body of evaluation evidence performed on this, on this strategy. And it really has concluded that of the leading violence reduction models, the GBRS model or focused deterrence, which is another name for it, really has the strongest body of research support. One systematic review or meta-analysis by the Campbell Collaboration in 2019 found that focused deterrence is associated with, with strong crime reduction effects and that the GBRS model in particular, which is one variation of focused deterrence, is generated with the largest impacts on, on reducing violence. Also importantly, this review had found that there are no significant crime displacement effects. Like doing GBRS in one area doesn't just push violence to another area. Actually, what they have tended to find in evaluations is that it tends to have what they call diffusion of benefits. So adjacent areas tend to get safer, in part because network dynamics tend to run across districts, as, as many of us know. Also importantly, although it's not on the slide, the systematic review found that many GBRS efforts are also associated with reductions in recidivism of individual participants, which is consistent with the goal that I know Baltimore has articulated. There have been other systematic reviews, a systematic review by USAID that looked at over 1,600 studies from around the world of all kinds of violence prevention and intervention and suppression approaches concluded that GBRS was the strongest approach, had the strongest evidence base. That's the same conclusion that the National Academy of Sciences came to when it was looking at all, all policing approaches to crime and violent crime reduction. Next slide, please. And so just to put some of this in context and the implications for where Baltimore is and where you're seeking to go. So this is just an example of a number of cities that have used this approach as a way to address serious violence and have been successful with it over, you know, extended periods of time, over multi-year horizons. And one thing that this demonstrates is that, that GBRS really is an effective approach if you do it correctly across a range of cities of different sizes, demographics, resource levels, violence dynamics, and political structures. So GBRS is quite powerful. But the challenge is that it's very difficult to do and it's partly difficult to do because it requires organizational changes on three different fronts in a city. It requires significant organizational changes in police agencies. Commissioner Harrison and Deputy Commissioner Briscoe spoke to some of those earlier. It requires significant changes in the way that we focus and use intervention strategies with people who are at imminent risk of violence right now. And it requires significant changes to the governance of cities and the executive branches in particular so that these multi-stakeholder initiatives can stay coordinated and accountable for results over time. And I'll just close to say that that is why the tri-party commitment that Baltimore has engineered as the foundation for this is so important. It's also why starting with the problem analysis as Baltimore has done is so important. Those are two critical errors that many cities commit that Baltimore has avoided. And embedding this, this effort with expert technical assistance advisors is also another critical step that many cities don't take. So in conclusion, I'd say there is a lot of work ahead and in no way do I want to diminish the serious challenge that Baltimore has in reducing violence. But I think the city really has taken critical steps to lay a solid foundation for success in the Western District and for eventual scaling to other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Vaughn. Mr. Chair, before I turn it back over to you, I'd close just by saying that as Jeremy alluded to when we were walking through the problem analysis, that we're estimating that the Western District has in, has upwards of 735 group-involved individuals. And we know that groups drive violent activity across district lines, as Vaughn alluded to. It's been intentional on the part of BPD, on the part of other law enforcement partners, and on the part of the mayor's office of neighborhoods to follow best practice, which is to start small, using data-driven decisions to figure out what adjustments need to be made and then to scale. At this point, happy to answer any questions. Um, at this point, happy to answer any questions that you or other members of the council might have.
Thank you, Director Jackson. Um, appreciate um especially walking through the problem analysis. I think and I hope uh that was really helpful to a number of folks. I've had the fortunate opportunity. I believe pretty much everyone in the committee has had the opportunity to see that piece. Um, but I I I think in order for us more generally to begin to address crime in the city, we have to intimately understand it. And I think that is a first step toward doing that. Um, I I I want to ask, um, these slides were not shared with us. Do you mind sharing those slides with us um for um reference in the future? Um, I and I I I was hoping you could clarify for me is my first question. Um, the custom notifications piece, how many folks were we've notified? How many folks we intend to notify? Um, I saw a couple of numbers up there. Twelve candidates, ten candidates that we've successfully reached and five outstanding. Um, a- and along that line of questioning, how many do we intend out of that seven hundred and thirty-five to touch?
So a couple of things here, sir. Thanks for the question and yes, we'll make sure that we share the slides with you. Um, with regard to the number of folks that have received direct communications, we have had twelve total candidates between January one and March twenty-sixth, this past Saturday. Um, two of those uh custom notifications were completed by law enforcement officers only. Around the full custom notification, five have been completed. Um, so the full custom notification involves not just law enforcement partners, but obvi- obviously also um community-based partners who are part of the direct communication work. Um, I I want to make sure that we're differentiating the direct notifications from service referrals because those things can happen um together and or separately. And so you saw a second slide that talked about the number of service referrals that we provided to ROKA and YAP, and that's where the twelve versus twenty comes in. There are times when um ROKA is getting, for example, a service referral from B P D for someone or a a young person that might be group-involved that doesn't necessarily translate into a law enforcement-only communication or direct communication um with law enforcement and community members. It could be that ROKA is just reaching out to that individual and then that there's a follow-up conversation with law enforcement. Um, now, your last question associated with how many, like when, or how many of the seven hundred thirty-five group-involved folks do we plan on doing notifications for? It's worth mentioning that just because folks are group-involved doesn't mean that all of the groups are violent or that there's a likelihood for them to be violent. It's going to be really important for us to be intentional and using intel and using credible messengers and and a series of other um investigative practices to determine who is going to make the most sense um to do a custom notification and or a call-in for. So we're not going to just be doing this mass, bring all of you into a room and have a conversation. Um, the messages have to be tailored to the individual for them to even resonate and to be real around accepting an invitation. There is also a de-confliction process because there are active investigations happening and it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to have a conversation with an individual who we're going to be arresting in two days to say, hey, step away from the life. It diminishes um the promise that we're making that folks have the opportunity to walk away. And so de-confliction is something that happens with our prosecutorial partners as well to make sure that we aren't having conversations with folks that arrest is imminent for. Um, I I think the final thing that I'll close up with and and I would ask Vaughn and Jeremy to to check in here if there's anything that I missed um is that ideally, out of every shooting, we're looking to target anywhere between one and five custom notifications coming out of the shooting reviews. That's going to vary per shooting, but that's kind of the range of folks that we're looking to uh reach out to. Folks, did I miss anything here?
Uh, Director Jackson, I would just say that's exactly right and the reason for that is it's based on super solid social science evidence. We know folks who have been shot are much more likely to be shot again and killed than anyone else in the population. And people who are directly connected socially are also much more likely to be shot or to become a perpetrator themselves. So working from the shootings is just the very best way to target our scarce intervention resources. Uh, I did want to see, I know David Mohammed is also on the line. David, if you wanted to add anything or lift up anything that that you feel like we didn't sufficiently cover. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I think um and uh Director Jackson, you and I have had this conversation already. I I appreciate the intentionality. I I do, I I have a little bit of concern about the scale that we're at right now and the impact that that could actually have. Um, and I think um uh Mr. Crandall um a- alluded to the fact that we intend to expand that custom notification piece. That's going to be a big part of our goal in the coming uh coming months. Um, and so I'm I'm eager to see what that turns into. I I do know in my previous experience with the program, it's a little bit different this time, but um, we did take the sort of more broad approach. Um, we held, I think, at that time, maybe three custom, three three notifications. Uh, and I think maybe there were forty and forty people in each of those notifications. Um, and in a in a four-month period or eventually a six-month period, we saw a reduction in in violent crime by fifty percent. I was shocked. I I'm a true believer. I know this works. Um, so there's no disagreement here. Um, but I am a little concerned about the scale and if twelve people is enough. Um, even fifteen or twenty people, I I don't I don't know. Um, I will I will leave that to you guys, but that is one of my concerns a- about uh where we are right now. Okay.
Yep, if I could, um, a- appreciate the concerns. Um, just a couple of things around wh- what scale looks like for us. We again were intentionally methodical about what we're calling this first cycle, if you will. We have established goalposts around the number of notifications that we want to see um be completed as a part of cycle two. Um, and so when I talk about, you know, the number of non-fadals and fatal shootings that we've had um through last Saturday and compare that to the number of notifications that we've done and then fast forward into this conversation and say we want to have one to five notifications coming out of every single shooting that happens, there you have exponential scale there. Um, the the other piece or the other the other part of this that I'll mention is that we've learned that while if that appeared to be effective for Baltimore, those results weren't sustainable for us, bringing forty, fifty folks into a room um weren't sustainable for us. And in fact, um, the the jurisdictions that have done this um in ways that are sustainable and are successful are seeing smaller groups of um call-ins be the most effective and just hosting a series of those. So anywhere between eight and eighteen folks at a time coming into a room, not forty folks at a time. We are doing the work right now associated with what preparing for a major call-in would look like. And um in many ways, want to make sure that we're able to tie that to a major law enforcement takedown.
Okay, thank you. Um, so you you're saying smaller call-ins, not the big forty, fifty foot-sized call-ins, but you know, less than ten uh is something that we are considering as as part of the scale-up uh considerations.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, and then the other question um has to do with regards to expansion. So um before we, we we did talk about expansion, hopefully by the end of the year to another district. Um, with that, do we expect to do a problem analysis before moving into the next district or or not? And then how long does that process take when we have to get it started to in order to launch conceivably before the end of December?
Right. Um, so as I alluded to, a couple of slides and um we are currently refreshing the problem analysis in the Western um because data's evolving and changing and we want to make sure that we have as close to real-time um understanding of trends as possible around group dynamics. We anticipate having that done um by sometime um Q three. And we are actively working with our partners at B P D and the State's Attorney's Office with regard to doing um an extended problem analysis to determine what district expansion looks like. Um, want to be really clear here in in saying um that um we don't believe that we're going to see successful implementation in less than a year, right? Um, but are very um focused on making sure that we're able to expand into another district um sometime in late Q four, early Q one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues. Any questions from the committee on G V R S? Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Um, Director Jackson, I did have a question about the implementation of the Shooting Response Protocol. Um, can you tell us where the office is and how it looks operationally, please?
I'm sorry, the implementation of?
The, I'm sorry, ma'am, the Shooting Response Protocol?
Ah, so the the Coordinated Neighborhood Stabilization Response.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that.
No, no, no worries, no worries. Um, obviously, I'm interconnected with the work that we're doing for the Group Violence Reduction Strategy. Um, but a distinct component of the Mayor's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. Um, where the office is located, I would offer that um it is a part of MONC's infrastructure that we've actually just um made a hiring decision associated with the person who's going to be responsible for rolling out that coordinated response and have identified a preliminary neighborhood um as our first neighborhood to pilot um that case. That that response is meant to be one that's both proactive and reactive, um making sure that we're taking resources into communities that need them most based on two-one-one, three-one-one and nine-one-one data collected. Um, so that the city uh community-based organizations and other partners become a stabilizing force for uh neighborhoods that are experiencing um shootings of multiple individuals at a single event, the shooting or death of a juvenile, a police-involved shooting um or um anywhere where we've got um other traumatic events happening. So looking to ramp that up in the next couple of months.
Okay, and is there a timeline as far as um once this person, you said you just brought a person on? Are we looking at six to eight months, a year, that we can see some sort of benchmarks for implementation?
So uh the person's actually slated to start on Monday. Um, and I would offer that we should be able to start to track um some quantitative um data and and some qualitative data in the coming quarter. We should be able to report back to you all in a quarter what um it's looking like at that point.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from the committee? Councilwoman Ramos?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Jackson and colleagues. Um, uh, I know that G V R S and the other couple strategies are are um part of the work, right? We're concentrating today on G V R S because that has been something that we have been discussing in this committee. Um, you've heard me say a bajillion times that um I wholeheartedly believe that part of violence reduction is also the environment and the reduction of vacant and abandoned properties in those areas is critical. We know when you look at a map, the majority of the violent crime is happening in areas with um vacant properties. So I know you have the neighborhood strategy that you're working with the Commissioner on. Could you give us a a brief update on how that's going?
Yes, um, I would, thanks for your question, Councilwoman. I would offer that uh it's not just the Police Commissioner and I. Um, absolutely, an all-hands-on-deck approach. Commissioner Kennedy is also very much a part of this work, given uh the Mayor's recent um hundred-million-dollar ARPA investment in housing here in Baltimore City. Two million of those dollars have specifically uh been earmarked for crime prevention through environmental design in these two neighborhoods. And we are, as the the Police Commissioner's team alluded to, we are actively having conversations with B P D and uh Fayette Street Outreach and Greater Bay Brook um who are the two pilot neighborhoods around where most of the crime is happening and what that correlates to with regard to blight uh and um vagance so that we can partner with them to identify what receivership looks like, what demolition looks like in their neighborhoods to abate crime and to remove blight simultaneously.
Um, I know that I I received a map of those areas um so that we can do sort of a house-by-house analysis, which I believe you're doing with the Commissioner and her team. Um, because every every house is a different story. Um, every house has a different strategy. I contend in some of those areas, receivership is not the right answer. It's in REMS, uh taxil foreclosure. Uh, but I know that you're working with her on figuring out, you know, all of that. So I'm I'm eager to um continue to follow up on how that's going. Two million is not enough um for blight elimination um in those areas. So um I'd be interested to to work with the Commissioner and I will follow up with her directly. But just to say it to you, since you're here, um about what that actually looks like. Um, because in terms of a budget, because we also know that we have to boost up the department in terms of lawyers, in terms of legal team, et cetera, to to get the strategy moving, not just in this two neighborhoods, but across the city. Um, I would be interested and I will follow up with her, as I said, to see like what else do we need to make this work? Because it I think is critical to A, testing my theory and B, to also um really make a major impact um in the neighborhood in more ways than one. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? I see Councilwoman Burnett, you have your hand up in the chat. Did you have any questions?
I said, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, um, with that, uh.
Mr. Chair, I did have a question.
Oh, you did? Oh, please, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, thank you, uh, and good to see you, Director. Um, the the question I had, uh, well, you answered a lot around group violence. Um, so that, one, just thank you for the update there. Um, the question I had, I I levied earlier around CityWatch. One of the um the things that uh I wanted to lift up or or a question around the expansion of the program is an opportunity a few years back to visit the program in New Orleans. And one of the things that they were effective at doing was producing cameras in-house through 3D printing and moving them around to different areas um so that the individuals, you know, may know where their where the camera is and and in our instance, where they're very stationary, you kind of know where they are um and may choose to avoid it, which could be a good thing as a deterrent. Um, but it it also doesn't give the the individual districts the flexibility to respond to where uh additional crimes may be being committed. Has has your office um looked at the ability? And they're also able to produce them at a much cheaper cost than the 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 system that we use um because they are able to do it in-house. Has there been any dialogue about uh using that as a model, uh considering the connection that the Commissioner has to N O P D?
Thank you for your question, Councilman. I would say to date, I am unaware of conversations associated with leveraging technology similar to what we see um NOLA uh using, but I'm happy to take this question to Elise Gillespie, who actually owns um the management of the CityWatch camera infrastructure um in the absence of um a deputy mayor for public safety at this point. Um, and happy to have her follow up with you directly around conversations that um are happening around expansion and or use of new technology.
Perfect. I follow up. Um, the second question.
Can I add something to 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 kind of help answer that question for you, Councilman?
Oh, absolutely. You 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 got me to visit, so.
Yeah, I'm sure. I think what you visited was the the real-time crime center. Um, and so that real-time crime center was uh erected and and built and staffed uh maybe about six months before uh before I came to Baltimore. But it wasn't done by the New Orleans Police Department. It was done and funded through the city's Office of Homeland Security who who staffs it and who manages it. Um, and so those funds came in through both public and private dollars and the cameras were uh were all purchased and all of those contractual things were handled through the Department of Homeland Security and not the Police Department. And while it's connected to the police department, it's all funded and management out of the mayor's office of homeland security. So we didn't have much. We didn't have much influence other than the crime analysis to tell where cameras should go, but not the type of cameras to purchase.
As helpful context, thank you. And I'll also just follow up to see what's possible here. The the other question I had was around the group violence reduction strategy, Director Jackson. One of the things, and I apologize if I missed it, but could you elaborate or revisit the, I guess, the incentives that are offered to individuals coming through the program? I thought the health, the health commissioner hit it right on the nose that things like robberies and and other types of crimes may be influenced heavily by the conditions that people live in. Could you elaborate about the partnerships that have been established and the types of things that are being offered to people who are coming through the program?
Yes, absolutely. I'll tell you specifically what we're doing here in Baltimore. And then I'll ask Advisor David Mohammed from the National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform just to to share a little more of expertise, given that he's been responsible for helping implement this across the country. So here in Baltimore, we're providing emergency relocation services and in fact are doing that at a much swifter clip than we've seen in previous administrations. We've relocated, I think, at this point, three families as a result of the group violence reduction strategy. Other incentives that we're providing to folks are stipends, living stipends associated with preparing them for transitional employment and or other living needs that they need to have accounted for. We are incentivizing folks to open bank accounts. We're incentivizing folks to show up for for trainings and for jobs. We are being really thoughtful about the number of life coaching sessions that you participate in and what the appropriate incentive looks like in order to continue to make sure that we see involvement with individuals who are at the highest risk of being shot. So that they continue to get the services that they need and they don't slip back into a pattern of past behaviors. David, I see that you've joined us. It looks like you're still at the airport, sir. Happy to have you jump in here to provide some additional context.
Yes, can you all hear me? So very quick, I've I've been on the whole time, but just been able to join via video. I'm in transit. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity. One, one wonderful question. I was excited when I heard the question about incentives. So a couple of quick pieces. What has happened in several jurisdictions or a few jurisdictions around the country? Is providing this financial incentive to engage a life coach? We're talking about a population who is at very high risk and very difficult to engage. And so in Baltimore, ROKA has a number of opportunities because they have a self-contained employment crew service where people can get immediate employment and daily wages. But in addition to that, they have the financial stipend. And Yap is setting up a very good, we're helping them develop a financial structure where there is certain achievements. So for instance, you will get a certain amount for constant engagement with your life coach, a certain amount with staying in compliance with probation, a certain amount for going on job interviews or getting a new job or finishing a cognitive behavior therapy program. And so it's a structured program where you get small stipend amounts for achieving certain milestones. And then every month you can earn up to a certain amount, like three hundred a month might be the maximum. But you get five certain milestone, fifty for a certain milestone, some big milestone like completing a college course or completing a cognitive behavior therapy program might be a little bit more. But that is the type of structure that is being used, implemented, as well as from the customizations just to connect with a life coach. There will be a small stipend to incentivize that engagement.
That's interesting. So I, yeah, okay, that sounds like, sounds like a pretty good way to approach this. My follow up would be then, I guess, the scalability, is there? You know, I don't think you may, you all may have the answer to this on hand, but how many people do you think you can help in this way? Is there other target numbers that you all have that you think, you know, through the budget, you can, you will be able to reach and effectively implement this strategy moving forward citywide?
Yes, so with the ARPA investment from the mayor, we are accounting for dollars necessary for the next three years until the ARPA dollars expire. That in the Western District specifically, while everyone won't need this level of incentive, we are targeting seventy five participants in the Western as a part of the pilot. And a certain percentage of those will need a variation of services. For example, one individual will need emergency relocation but won't need a stipend. And or already has a bank account, right? And so making sure that we're accounting for individual need by asking the right questions and by that constant touch with a life coach. And when we say constant touch, we're talking about folks who are reaching out to individuals two, three times a day. This is not a let me check on you once a week because we know the acute risk that they face of being shot or being a shooter, and so making sure that we're having real time contact. As we continue to grow this, we're estimating right now about three hundred folks annually that we're potentially providing some variation of service for.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have just one, one more question, and that's with regard to an evaluation. Do we intend to do an evaluation of the pilot once it's complete? And how, if you can give me a little more insight on what the plans are there?
Yeah, I would offer that a part of the contract that we have with the university includes evaluation of the success of the program. And in addition to that, we have entered into contracts with the University of Maryland and with Johns Hopkins Hospital to do an evaluation of the intersection between Safe Streets, our hospital-based responder program, and the group violence reduction strategy specifically within the Western. It's this office's intention to make sure that we're doing evaluations every two years and that we're very transparent about what we're finding.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions from the committee before we move on to our next hearing? Seeing for the questions. Thank you, Director, and appreciate the the update, the problem analysis and just everything. I look forward to hearing more in our next opportunity to chat.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, guys, I think we're like three hours in and we were moving to our second bill. Our our next bill is Bill L O twenty-two dash zero zero two five, Baltimore Police Department, Five-Year Crime Reduction Strategy, for the purpose of requesting an update from the Baltimore Police Department on progress being made with their five-year crime reduction strategy. This bill is introduced on February seventh, twenty twenty-two, and it was sponsored by myself. And I am just gonna go ahead and turn it over to the police department so we keep moving along and give us an update on where we are on the strategy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the committee. Real quickly, I'll I'll address you and turn it over. I released this five-year crime reduction and departmental transformation plan back in July of twenty nineteen. When I first arrived in Baltimore, we realized that the department had very few goals for performance. If you take patrol, for example, we asked some very important questions like, that I don't think had been asked. How much time is patrol spending on answering calls for service? How quickly are they responding to those calls? How much time is actually being spent not answering calls for service? And what they're doing with that time? Again, I'm only using this as an example as context as to how we set about to ask questions across the department, draft the plan, and then set performance goals. Some of the goals that were set up for ourselves were achieved. Many were achieved. Some were achieved but took a little more time than the benchmark dates we set. Some goals were very ambitious, while others were very aspirational. While some goals we're still working to achieve in in the interest of time. I've given you an example of the goals we set forth. And now I'll hand it off to my chief of staff, Eric Mottson, who will take you through the presentation and will certainly be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. So overall, in developing the crime reduction and transformational plan, the commissioner outlined overarching goals for our department. The four major goals are reducing crime through a comprehensive approach, strengthening local, state, and federal partnerships, transforming B P D through the consent decree, and a renewed focus on recruitment and retention. And so those are the four overarching topics that the plan's metrics on performance mirror up against. And so that's why I wanted to frame that out before we begin. So in starting with reducing crime, we're tracking performance on proactivity, warrant service, response time goals. And then we're checking these through our CONSTAT process, which is a regular process that our department uses to ensure that we are meeting and maintaining the level of activity for these goals. Our efforts surrounding proactive engagements have been strong. We've been hitting our our output goals consistently since we began these tracking metrics. Response time goals have been very strong, especially for our code one emergencies and for shot spotter alerts. That's key because we want to ensure that we are getting to those in a timely fashion. Our warrant service goals are what we have the most concern about. We have addressed that before in in trying to get more resources. It really is a capacity and resource dependent activity. And ensuring that we're able to hit the metrics that we set for ourselves, that's part of the reason we partnered with the mayor's office in making that request. We're looking at that state legislation that was mentioned earlier about additional grant funds. And so we're very thankful in seeing how we can get additional resources to bear and expanding capacity in that way. But that's what's needed in order to get that goal back up where we need to in the thresholds we're looking. Next slide, please. Civilization, professionalization of administrative tasks, this is a key function. We have to be able to build capacity on a parallel path, not just through the additional sworn members. We have a civilization plan that was really put forward in FY twenty. But a lot of the COVID emergency revenue shortfalls that resulted resulted in reductions and and budgetary freezes that we've had to work through over the last couple of fiscal years. We're working closely with the mayor's office on a revised approach, and we're hoping to have something that we can really point towards in the coming weeks. But that is something we still want to make sure is a part of our plan, that we are making sure our officers are doing the work that only officers can do, that we're leveraging civilians to the greatest amount possible and building that into our organizational structure. Expanding our crime analytics capacity is also key. That's a force multiplier for us in being able to talk about the work that our B sixes have done. We had a previous conversation about that. You know, we have four active B sixes or the Baltimore Community Intelligence Centers in our districts now. Our goal is always to long term be able to expand that to nine, all nine districts. That's something for which we're looking to embed analysts in those districts, partner with the state attorney's office. It's resource dependent, but we have a phase plan that we're continuing to push forward on in the coming years. Next slide, please. COMSAT redesign, this was mentioned at the top of DC Briscoe's argument, you know, presentation earlier. Our argument here is that we had to completely look at CONSAT all over again. It was only looking at specific areas of crime when we need to look at it from a holistic approach. Everything from overtime spending, which is, you know, commander responsibility, or use of force and ensuring that that's all being done in compliance with our consent decree, fleet management, H R management, sick leave management. We want to make sure we're watching on all these things. And we are either completed or nearing completion on that full review. And then finally, the output that we're looking to do for transparency's sake is develop a online digital platform, which would allow for the public to see some of these metrics to ensure that there is a level of transparency in how we are holding our officers or our management, rather, accountable for the work that our officers are doing. Next slide. We mentioned before strengthening our local, state, and federal partnerships. A big piece of that is the National Public Safety Partnership, which has introduced Baltimore as one of its its key cities where it provides technical assistance. We have ongoing monthly reviews of the most violent drug trafficking organizations in operating in Baltimore. That is a continuous and coordinated effort. We have partnerships with A T F, D E A, the U S Marshal Service, and our FBI partners to really get a handle on understanding the networks of what's going on. That is a continuous effort that's been implemented, that was implemented early on in twenty nineteen when the commissioner first arrived. That technical assistance is also vital for us. It gives us the ability to expand our capacity, be able to diagnose crime trends, that kind of, you know, technical training is is vital for us. We've been receiving that training and continue to leverage P S P's federal technical resources on an ongoing basis. Next slide. We, Monsey spoke very broadly on all the comprehensive violence production pieces. This was part of the commissioner's approach from twenty nineteen on. It is now a subset of the mayor's overall strategy in the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement. There was full integration between us and 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 Monsey on that. There's no daylight between us. And so that is all part in moving forward of that enhanced strategy. Next slide. And so transforming our department through the consent decree. This is about looking at everything from optimizing what we do and how we do it, but also changing the culture of the agency to ensure that our officers are receiving the right training and the right best practices on policy. We've reviewed our dispatch practices. We've ensured that there's an opportunity for us to divert calls. We're in a position now with that review being completed so for us to be able to push more towards telephone reporting and work with Monsey and the mayor's office on final diversion determinations. False alarms is a part of the commissioner's plan. This is a key effort for which we analyze false alarm data. And, you know, back in March of last year, we introduced legislation in this committee to be able to reduce our false alarm burden, to ensure that our officers are responding to actual emergencies and that folks who are consistently and continuously having false alarms at their sites are are not seeing this level of service when it's not necessary for public safety reasons. And so that that legislation is still under consideration by the committee. And then finally, electronic warrant system, this is again a process improvement. We saw a method of this during COVID, which was what resulted in a kind of digital form of this. But we're looking to expand that capacity. That's in line with phase two of our records management and case management implementation that will have a warrants application to it. And that's something for which we're still specing out the technical requirements. Next slide. So in our strategic technology initiatives, a lot of this, again, is tied to our consent decree laws. We cannot monitor, but we cannot measure. And so having these systems in place for which we've received, you know, kudos from our monitoring team and and its implementation report is really important for us to be in a good place internally. And so their learning management system, the working workforce management system, records management system, are key systems that need, that we need to be able to track and manage and monitor our efforts. Phase two of records management is case management. Early intervention is still in development. That's a a system that needs to happen after the RMS is in place. So some of this is done in sequence to ensure that it's properly implemented in the right way. And so we're on track and we're on schedule with these projects. And we have a great I T section in our department that really is focused on this and a good partnership with B sit to make sure that we're getting all the resources we need to bear to ensure that we're implementing this in a timely fashion and in and then under the consent decree deadlines. Next slide, please. So community policing, commitment to de-escalation, fair and impartial policing. This is all tied back to trainings that we've been able to complete for the entire department. Again, commissioner set these goals very early to ensure that we're on the right path. Our officers need to understand not just what they cannot do, but what they can do. And that's what these trainings are all about. Use of force policies, stop searches and arrest, community policing as a general and and specific principle, really, of how we need to operate going forward. We've completed training for the entire department for those areas. And we continue to see participation in our C I T or critical incident team response training. That's vital for us to ensure that we have a trauma-informed approach to how our patrol officers are responding to some of these calls. Next slide. And so expanding our our focus of recruitment and retention, that's the last pillar of this overall five-year strategy. A host of of review and administrative improvements and process improvements that were needed in our recruitment and our academy training processes. It includes everything from deploying a concierge program for our recruitment division, ensuring that we're resequencing our instruction to, you know, making certain that our our curriculum is as tight as possible so that we can produce recruits onto the field as soon as possible. Our digital marketing campaign, our increase in applications, these are all metrics that we measure against the plan on a consistent basis. We still need to do more on ensuring folks are passing that physical fitness program. That's a piece of the puzzle that went down because of COVID and we need to restart it again. And as Deputy Commissioner Gillis mentioned in our previous presentation, we're trying to increase the pipeline for folks in our educational sector to get into an enhanced cadet program over time. So those are the pieces of the puzzle that we're still looking towards that are implemented as part of our plan. Next slide. And then again, improving the working conditions and increasing capacity on officer safety and wellness. So we've relocated our training academy. We have a new central district station. We have a lot of our anti-crime section that's also. We have a lot of our anti-crime section that's also located with them at the Sun Paper Building. We are looking at a potential funding source for additional district stations that are coming our way in the coming years. We're getting some positive news, but nothing finalized yet on that. But we have a review of all the different facility issues and we need to develop and now execute on the plans on improving that overall. We've deployed over five hundred new computer workstations at all our district stations and headquarters, including, you know, computers in the cars as well, so that our officers can, you know, produce those reports instead of doing it on paper, doing it right into the digital system we have. Then implementing the best practices for our officer safety and wellness program. Not only do we have best practices, but we are now the one of the national models in the country for officer safety and wellness. And that is something for which we are very proud and the work that our officers and our leadership in that unit do is really a testament to how well Baltimore has seen the country for that area of expertise. Next slide. And then finally, you know, there are two pieces of the puzzle that we wanted to make sure we highlighted when it comes to leadership development and peer intervention. Our epic program, ethical policing is courageous. Again, another national model for how peer intervention and active bystandership when it comes to mitigating a disciplinary issue before it ever becomes relevant. I mean, it's not just a duty to intervene, but it's also, you know, in an effort to focus on that officer and helping them get through an issue and identifying those issues from a holistic basis and not just going to work every day. And so that's a piece of the puzzle we received. We've completed training for the entire department on that. That's part of the part of the plan. And for us, that's now again a model for which other agencies are coming to us asking, how can we replicate a similar program for their agencies? And then finally, leadership development. This is really focused on our command staff training. This is vital in ensuring our new captains and majors have the tools of the trade to really be able to be effective and and really, you know, inspiring leaders for our department going forward. We're proud to say that we've completed a number of trainings. We're actually doing one next week for some of our new training, new captains and majors that are sponsored by PERF, the Police Research Forum. And overall, we've sent a number of members over the last several years to the Senior Management Institute of Police. Again, final programs for us, long term training opportunities for our commanders and rarely necessary. All of these aspects of the of the plan speaks to what the commissioner was talking about, that we have to look at the department internally to make sure that we are operating at the best rate that we can so that we can be the most effective department to service the needs of public safety for the citizens of Baltimore. And so for us, you know, it is that holistic review of everything we're doing so that we can be the most effective crime reduction and and overall effective law enforcement agency in the country. Turn it back to the police commissioner if he has any final comments, but that concludes this portion of the presentation.
So I don't think I have anything else, Mr. Chairman. I will say that everything that you just heard my chief of staff goes through. While there were four major pillars, there there are really seven core items that cover everything that we do. And I'll go through that really quickly. There's crime reduction, community, compliance, culture, connectivity, capacity, and last communication, which touches all of them. Easy to remember, they all begin with the letter C and everything that we're doing touches one of those seven four components. At this time, I'll pause if you or others have any questions.
Sure, thank you, and I appreciate you guys walking through each piece. It sounds like we made a lot of progress. We've completed almost everything, which is great that we're methodically moving through our plan. I think one of the big questions I have is, of course, in light of the changes that we've seen in crime recently, do we anticipate or foresee changes to the plan in order to adjust to that changing need?
I don't think we see changes to this plan. What we, this is very strategic. This is long term to really transform the department into a world-class agency. What we are always doing is assessing not just daily, but sometimes shift by shift, what kinds of crimes are being committed, when they are being committed, where they are being committed and by whom are they being committed? And we make adjustments to make sure we can increase our deterrence and our capacity to apprehend those people. Once again, I think as we roll out the new cars and we are able to be in more places and we can maximize how we utilize the resources and the people, the human capital resources that we have in a better way, because not just it's not just that we're getting more people, but we need to utilize them better. Those new cars, the new recruits that are coming out, all will pay dividends. And what we didn't say is that we we put around the new vehicles out on the street. Twenty eight to the exact just last week, week before last, there are another fifty or sixty or so that are on the way that will be on the streets and over the next year, there should be another hundred fifty to two hundred that citizens will see constantly in their neighborhoods, more than they see now because some of them, we don't have the capacity to put out now. But but that's a major improvement. I think what we constantly see is a shift in daily deployments, weekly deployments, based on a spike, which is a short term increase. And as we see trends, which are usually beyond times of periods beyond thirty days to an entire annual quarter, we make adjustments quarterly when we see major trends. But we're constantly doing weekly, daily and weekly adjustments based on what's happening and when it's happening and by whom.
Thank you, that that does help. I think, you know, and you and I have had a little bit of this conversation already, but I think a- as with anything, you you put out a big plan and then reality hits you. And so you realize that that plan didn't have everything baked into it. And so, you know, as we think about the changes that we've seen over the last three years and how we incorporate what we've learned the last three years, whether that's in, you know, increasing deployments for spikes or adjusting deployments for for trends. I mean, making sure that we are thinking about those things along the way, I think is important. The the other question I have is with regard to the implementation of the group violence unit. Has the unit been fully staffed and is it operational? And do we know how many officers are a part of that unit if so?
Absolutely, it is fully staffed, it is operational. They had, I actually greeted them on Monday morning. They started, I think it was a three day training to really give them the comprehensive overview again of what it is. But yes, it is fully staffed, it is functional, they are working investigations. They are doing strict work and investigative work. And I'll let my deputy come in and talk a little bit more if there's anything I've forgotten to say.
Um, you covered it, but to say, yes, they are fully staffed. But I, along with their being fully staffed, it's not only just sworn members. We also have professional members on the team because we've expanded our victim services and our our goal is to grow it beyond where it is, taking best practice lessons from other major cities. So they're not, it is not just a sworn component that is fully staffed and operational. It is also, like I said, a professional staff, whether it is our analysts or our victim services unit. But they're colessing both the state's attorney's office as well as our partners to include Monty.
How many sworn members do we have a part of that as part of that unit?
So at this juncture, we have forty seven sworn members as a part of that unit and fourteen professional staff members.
Excellent, thank, thank you. Any, I'm going to open the floor to questions from the committee. Any other questions about the five year plan? I see Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First question I had was around the implementation of the intimate partner violence stat program. What data is going to be captured in the stat process? And what programs do you have available to help victims of intimate partner violence?
So I'm going to start there and I do not know if our Monty partners are on the call any longer. And I say I'm acknowledging their presence because we are working together. That is another one of those areas that we are collaborating. So there are, as you know, we already outreach. And if I name a partner, that means I won't name one and I'll just out of human error, I'll forget one. So there are LITIA partners. Some are non Spanish speaking, I mean, non English speaking partners that we're working with because we know we have a vulnerable population in some of our Latina community. So we are working there and we're also, like I said, working along with our Monty partner, state attorney's office. House of Roof is a long laundry list and there's a working group that's collaborating and it involves BPD and those partners and we're getting together biweekly. We had to tease out some of the gaps and then work towards closing those gaps, either the process or innovation. So not yet completed work, work that really required us to do a true assessment as to what we're seeing in terms of gaps and find innovation and other partners to help close those gaps. So that is work that is still in in progress and process. So I can provide you with more detail in writing. And if our Monty partner is still on the call, I welcome Director Jackson or someone from her team to add anything additional if I may have missed it.
Yes, we're still here, thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Councilman, I would offer that while there's obviously going to be a partnership between the Baltimore Police Department and Monty as it relates to IPV stat, that it is something that will likely be housed within Monty's case management system predominantly. And Nick Wilson, who is on the phone with us, is the Associate Director of Policy and Research. The data team will be reporting into him. He can speak more specifically about the data points that we're looking to capture, given the work that is starting to happen through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and the Domestic Violence Fatality Review, in addition to some of the trainings and other work that's happened between BPD, Monty and others as a result of getting an Office of Violence Against Women grant from the feds. Nick, if you're ready to give an update here on what we believe that we'll be capturing preliminarily, that would be helpful.
Thank you, yeah. So myself and the GPRS team have been having weekly meetings with Ops Performance Innovation and our partners trying to decide which of the many data all of our partners and agencies are collecting, what makes sense to put together in a performance tool for both internal workings and for the public to have a sense of where things are. So some of the numbers, you know, types of contacts and referrals, you know, those are the sort of things that will definitely be included. But we'll also be making sure that we're not just, you know, making sure that every shooting review happens and every kind of dot is is crossed, is that we want to make sure that there aren't, you know, gaps in the processes and that every agency is coming together. So that way, you know, if we're getting all the intelligence we need from the police departments as well as the community partners and are we making sure that referrals aren't taking too long? What's the uptick on stipends and transitional employment and housing? And so it's going to be some of the things we presented today, but a lot more information about Yap and Aroca and getting down, using our case management system, really tracking every point in contact with these individuals at the highest risk. So something that we're looking forward to getting up up off the ground when my data analyst starts on May second. Thank you.
Well, there's a, as a follow up to that, the, where are we with the neighborhood stat initiative in this plan?
Uh, so right now, there's several stats that Monty is kind of getting up and running. So the ones that we talked about, the state of stats, one is GPRS stat. The other one that's been a pressing issue mostly from feedback from city council is intimate partner violence, some kind of data collaborative, because right now there really isn't one place where we can get a sense of what's happening with domestic violence and the intersection with a lot of the community violence that we're seeing. So that's definitely our kind of other top priority to get launched by July first. And then after that, we're going to start looking at more holistic data, not just city agency data, but using the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, building in a public accountability dashboard that combines a lot of the city numbers that we're already collecting and then layering on top of that court data and corrections data and reentry data to get a better sense of how our criminal justice system is working and where are there opportunities for more coordination? And so eventually, as we kind of build more stats and incorporate it to what's already happening with police stat and clean stat, eventually the goal is to have a more neighborhood wide stat that includes also some of the contracting we're doing with partners to do listening sessions and community surveys and getting other kind of qualitative senses of public safety, put that all together. But that will take a little bit more time as we get the other ones up and running.
And just to add on here, Councilman, thanks for that, Nick. We have just executed a contract with Benya, who is going to be helping us pour the foundation, if you will, associated with neighborhood stat. So that contract involves doing a landscape analysis of all of Baltimore's community-based assets, both traditional and non-traditional across the entire city, including our thirty four hundred plus nonprofits, but also those that may be fiscally sponsored and or operating out of their pockets so that we can layer that on top of already captured Benya data that's often fed into open data with our chief data officer and overlaying that obviously with the data that comes out of clean stat and and other statting systems. I would offer that at the end of the day, we'd like to have a comprehensive stat and not a series of stats. And that's Monty's goal as is working in partnership with the mayor's office of performance and innovation.
Got it, thank you, Director Jackson, until you, Dean.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing no questions, I have just two quick ones. Can someone explain to me the difference between the group violence unit and the district action teams?
Thank you for that. I know if you had that question, others may, that's a really good question. So the district action team is assigned under the leadership of that district commander. He or she is giving the daily direction and guidance for that unit. And the group violence reduction strategy is under our anti-crime section that is in our criminal investigation division, though the principles of it are going to go across all of operations, which is why you will often see Colonel Willie and Jones together in many of the meetings and discussions as to that unit. Because how it operates is something that's going to transcend CID. That it that, but that is where the unit is housed out of anti-crime section in GPRS. Group violence reduction strategy, it is the unit in all of these preceding units that are underneath of it.
So the group violence unit of folks working to to help with GPRS?
Yes, sir.
And then district action teams are the action teams that are commanded by each major?
Each major, it is the non-p patrol committed resources at the discretion of each major.
Okay. And then just as an understanding, so we had, we have forty seven sworn officers work in that unit. And right now it's only operating out of the, excuse me, GPRS is only operating out of the Western District. Are all those forty seven folks in the Western District? And if not, then what what do those folks do in the meantime?
So let me be clear, we're talking about the group violence reduction strategy. It is a people-based strategy, meaning that those people and groups are fluid. They're not just residing within the Western District, if you will. So the work is contiguous and there are other components. There's an enforcement component, an investigative component, there's an outreach and engagement component. And that deals with, that supports the work that they do that focuses on our gun offenders as well as some of the guns and the and what we're seeing come out of the violence. So there are different components to the unit overall that have different sets of focuses with within that larger mission. So it's an investigative enforcement outreach. So so it is self-sufficient, the unit in and of itself.
Got it. And as as we scale up GPRS, does that mean that unit scales up? Or is that unit by and large going to be able to take on, you know, an additional district, so on and so forth?
So that's some of the things that we're learning from the power to inform the work because this becomes about capacity. That's why you hear us talking about training and making sure that the messaging and the tenements that govern GPRS, we're taking those learned lessons and applying them to those strategies, applying them to district level teams so that as we scale and move, they're able to hold shooting reviews. They're able to adopt the same strategies as the GBRs unit, as GBRs unit, as they move throughout the city as we scale. But there's some things that we're looking for the pilot to inform us in terms of best practice. The pilot, as well as our national partner, to inform us what that looks like as we move through the through the city.
And as a general approach, it's a general approach on staffing. We want to look at the workload and the workload will help us govern long-term if that strategy requires more resources to be able to support the workload that GBR needs to. That comes with scale.
Well, simply put, Councilman, it it simply put, as we scale to other districts, it is very likely to scale up. But I don't want anyone to think that as we move from one district to two, that we have to replicate it and add another forty-seven just for another district. And then another forty-seven for the third district. It doesn't, the the size of the unit doesn't scale like that. It will scale up, but not nearly like that.
I see. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. Those are all my questions. I don't see any other questions from the committee. Director Jackson, was there anything else that you wanted to add, I think?
The only thing that I wanted to add to what my colleagues at BPD already shared about what scale for BPD and even potentially Monsey would look like is that it's going to be informed by the extended problem analysis. We're going to need to determine what group membership looks like in all of these other districts, right? And so if we're talking about upwards of seven hundred thirty-five members in the Western District alone, we don't have the numbers right now across all of the other districts to determine what group membership looks like and making sure that we aren't spreading our folks too thin. But to the point that the police commissioner made, it's not going to be a one-for-one scale. We we are going to maximize at a certain point. The only other thing that I have to add here, sir, is we've presented all of our slides to you all today, but did one to let the council and the public know that as Monsey's committed, we are publishing our quarterly progress report on the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan on behalf of the mayor on April first on our website, and it will be accessible there.
One more question. As far as the Violence Prevention Task Force, is that task force going to produce a report and annual report? And if so, do we know when that may be available?
So I would offer that the Public Safety Advisory Commission is a commission that is tasked with producing an annual report and in fact, delivered an annual report in November to this body. I believe that those community members and extended team members are looking for some time to present that to this body with regard to the Expanded Violence Prevention Task Force. I do not believe that there is a requirement that they produce an annual or any sort of recurring report, but that they are informing Monsey of their discovery so that that information is rolled into our regular progress reports.
I think in the Violence Prevention Plan, it says that they would produce an annual report under pillar three.
One moment, sir.
Sure. Thank you.
You said under pillar three?
Yes, pillar three.
I'm happy to come back to you on that, sir. I don't want to take the time of this committee right now, but I'm happy to come back to you on that one.
Yeah, that's that's fine. I think that that is my my last question. I appreciate all three and three hours and thirty-nine minutes. You guys are dedicated to this issue and I'm sure we could dedicate, you know, a full eight more if if needed. You know, I I admire you guys for the time, effort and brain power you put into this work. And, you know, we're not where we want to be right now, but you know, we'll we'll keep at it and just want to thank you all. With that, the committee will go into recess and I will see you guys for our next quarterly update in a quarter. Thank you.